The regular meeting of the Board of Education from March 19th, 2019 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all regular board meetings. And she is standing up in the back. Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language into which they'll be interpreting, and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium should someone need their assistance.
Xin chào quý vị buổi tối, tôi là Hằng thông dịch Việt Nam. Nếu mà ai cần thông dịch tôi ngồi ở dưới. Cảm ơn nhiều.
I'm Chinese interpreter. If you need help, I can help you.
Good evening. If you need Russian translation, my name is Maши. I'm sitting there in the hall. Thank you.
Hello and good night to all. My name is Daniel and I will be offering the service of the Spanish interpretation. You're located in the bottom part. Muchas gracias.
I'd like to note that Item 7 on the published agenda, the Level 3 complaint consideration, has been postponed to a future date. Resolution 5858 related to the complaint has also been withdrawn from the business agenda. And, Board members, are there any items in the remaining business agenda that you have questions on?
No, but I'm going to have to depart before we get to the business agenda for my kids' games, but my questions have been sufficiently resolved.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So, we'll move right into the celebration portion of the tonight's festivities. We're going to be celebrating the Benson Girls Basketball Team, the Jefferson Boys Basketball Team, and the Grant Boys Basketball Team. PPS has many athletic teams throughout the district, all of which are hugely important for the students who participate in them, their families, and the school community. And many of them have won many competitions over the years. And tonight, we're going to be celebrating three of them. The Jefferson Girls won the 6A State Championship. Congratulations.
Look at your shirt.
Congratulations, you didn't know that. Okay. My apologies. The Benson Girls won the 6A Championship. The Jefferson Boys Basketball Team was the runner-up in the State Championship. And the Grant Boys Basketball Team captured 4th place in the championship. I'd like to introduce Marshall Haskins, PPS Athletic Director, to say a few words and
Thank you, Director Moore. I am just truly excited and proud to be here today to share the successes of three of our teams. And as you said, Director Moore, we've had tremendous success during this winter. We have state champion in swimming, we had a couple of state champions in wrestling. It's just been a great winter, but it was also a great fall. But tonight, celebrating the three teams here tonight, I'll start in reverse order. I'll have Robert Key from Grant High School. Coach Key, will you come up, please? So, could the Grant Team just come stand right here in front of me, please? As they're coming down, this group of seniors has had a tremendous high school career. They came in 4th this year, partially because of a bad draw where they had to play Jefferson in the first round. But last year, they were able to capture the State Championship themselves. So they've had a great run and we're very proud of them. But more importantly, they're also a group of great student athletes representing Grant High School. Can we give them a hand, please? Coach Key, can you just come up, maybe say one or two things and introduce the players that are here?
So, to my right, we have Junior Zion Ball. Senior Ty Rankin. Freshman Dondre Fair. Senior Aaron Deloney. Senior Everett Conrad. Junior Emmanuel Stewart. Junior Laquandre Taylor. And Junior that I'm gonna miss is transferring to Grant's Pass. His dad got a new job, but Junior Kate Ely. On behalf of the Grant Community and our program, a tremendous run for us, I salute to the Benson Tech Girls, great job this year. I watch you guys from afar as well, and of course, to our neighbors, the Jefferson Democrats. Thank you, guys. You guys have done a great job all year. I wish you all the best of luck.
Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. I'm gonna ask Director Bailey to read the proclamation, and then after that, I'm gonna ask the board members to go up and we'll do a photo op.
So, I'm proud to wear this shirt honoring the Benson women, but my class is 71. So, it's blue and gray in here, guys. So, proclamation honoring Grant High School's Boys Basketball Team. Whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent recognized the significant accomplishment of the Grant High School Boys Basketball Team, who placed 4th in the OSAA Class 6A State Championship Quarterfinals on March 6th. Whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent wished to thank the students for their teamwork and tenacity throughout this season. Whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent applaud the entire Grant Community of teachers, students, parents, neighbors, and the team's exceptional coach, Robert Key, all of whom have supported and encouraged this team to be and play their very best. Now therefore, the Board of Education and Superintendent do hereby recognize and congratulate the Grant Generals Boys Basketball Team on its accomplishment of an outstanding basketball season. Congratulations.
Okay, we're all disrobing back here. Give us a second.
Next team. Can I have Coach Pat Strickland for Jefferson Boys? I thought I had set the pace for how I wanted to be. He's actually tripled my state championships, I think, so I think I made a good decision hiring him as coach. But I wanna say to Coach Strickland, we're very, very proud of the Jefferson team and community. I know sometimes coming in 2nd doesn't feel good. I try to tell some of the players, when you're old as us, you'll go back and see your name on the blue thing, and 2nd won't feel that bad. So, Coach Strickland, Jefferson High School.
All the fellas, come on up. While the fellas are coming up, on behalf of Jefferson Boys Basketball Program, we just wanna thank the school board for having us tonight. We also wanna give a shout out to the Benson Techmen and the Grant Generals for their accomplishments this year. And I wanna give a big kudos to our principals, our vice principals, our athletic director, and the staff at Jefferson High School for making this a pretty good year for us. And I will name the guys off. We'll start with Trey John Williams. Step out when I call your name. He's a freshman. He'll be back for next year. We have Charles Douglas, one of our graduating seniors this year. We have Lamar Washington, another one of our freshmen. And the next person, we have John. I'm not even gonna try to pronounce his last name. I've been having problems all year. Jacoby. Jonathan Jacoby. One of our graduating seniors. And we have another senior, Marcus Ahonis. Another senior, Trey Richmond. Another senior, Will Taylor. We have a sophomore, Cameron Robinson. Sophomore Nate Kabongue. We have another senior, Kealan Vance. And we have another sophomore, Jalen Adams. And once again, thanks for having us.
We have a proclamation. And a picture, don't forget. Okay. So whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent recognized the significant accomplishments of the Jefferson High School Boys Basketball Team, who placed 2nd in the OSAA Class 6A State Championship on March 9th, 2019. Whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent wished to thank the students for their teamwork and tenacity throughout this season. Whereas the Board of Education and Superintendent applaud the entire Jefferson Community of teachers, students, parents, neighbors, and the team's exceptional coach, Pat Strickland, all of whom have supported and encouraged this team to be and play their very best. Now therefore, the Board of Education and Superintendent do hereby recognize and congratulate the Jefferson Democrats Boys Basketball Team on its accomplishment of an outstanding basketball season. Thank you and congratulations.
Can the taller people be in the back so we can switch this question a little bit? Coach Knox, can you come down, please?
As Coach Knox is coming down, I wanted to say something on his behalf. He might was gonna allude to it, but I'll say it publicly. Coach Knox applied for the Boys Benson Basketball job 6 years ago. And the principal, in consultation with the district athletic director, decided to hire someone else. But in that meeting, Coach Knox said, you know, "I could coach anything. I coached girls, I coached girls, I got a daughter, but I will be an unbelievable Boys Basketball Coach." So he walks out. I told Curtis to call him and offer him the girls' job. Curtis talked with him. As soon as he hung up with Curtis, he called me and went, "Have you guys lost your mind? Why, how did I get the boys' job? I know I'm the best candidate possible. I went to Oregon State, I was a star, blah, blah, blah." And I said, "Eric, I think you're gonna be a phenomenal girls' coach." He said, he talked with his wife and thought about it, and here we are today, 6 years later. First year, he was 0-24, and 6 years later, he has a State Championship. Can we give him a hand, please?
Benson, Benson, Texas, come up here, 'cause this is more about you and your accomplishment
It's too hot. Too hot to wear a suit today. To piggyback on what Marshall Haskins said, I have always learned that God gives you what you need, not what you want. And I needed them on so many levels, and they needed each other. Because, you know, I told our girls from day 1, "It's not about basketball for us, it's about telling the story." And I always get emotional, but, you know, 38 years, till last Saturday, who would've thought, you know, a team from the PIL, smallest school in the state tournament, numerically, 78% free and reduced lunch. A third of our girls played in track shoes 3 years ago. Some girls couldn't even afford the participation fee, and for us to be at the state tournament was a miracle with the limited resources we had. But we realized that not having resource can sometimes serve as the resource. And when we didn't have the slick shoes and the nice uniforms, we had each other. And there's something beautiful about a bond, if you believe in it, that can be transformational. I'm reminded of a quote by Wes Moore that says, "Young girls are more likely to believe in themselves if they know that there's someone somewhere who shares that belief. To carry the burden of belief alone is too much for young shoulders." We had belief, right? Like, you don't have to have exceptional talent if you have exceptional belief. And all year, Mackenzie Porter, who's doing an HBCU tour this week, isn't here, but she tried to tell everybody in the paper that we were gonna win this. I didn't believe her. I even told her to calm the rhetoric down. You know what I'm saying? You're putting too much pressure, but she saw something I didn't. She was Nostradamus in the moment. And for some reason, on Championship Saturday, it was the most peaceful day of my life. I have never been more peaceful about something than I was the day I got married. Like, that was the most peaceful day of my life. The second most peaceful day was the State Championship game, and that's real talk. And I knew we were gonna win. They knew more than I knew that we were gonna win, and during the game, I knew we had the game, I just didn't know at what point we had the game. And so, I'm so proud of these girls because 38 years, the PIL's been overdue to see elite girl basketball played at a high level in the city. And so, I am so freaking proud of these girls. Let's just give it up. They're amazing, they're amazing basketball players, but I would invite you, as I introduce everyone, they're amazing basketball players, but if you have time, go online, Google them at the state tournament, and listen to their quotes. Barely said anything about basketball. They were dialed into issues. They understood that they represented something more than basketball, and they kicked wide open the door for a lot of young girls in the city to play at a high level, and I'm so proud of them at what they did and what that game meant to them. And so, what I wanna do is introduce them right now. First, there's Taylor Lydeya, one of our seniors. She'll be getting a Division 1 scholarship. I'm really excited about that. Bria Dixon, a junior, she'll be back to haunt the state. DeeDee Norman, a very fast athletic guard, freshman. Jordan Woolmuth, one of our sophomores. Ajay Yocum, step forward, one of our amazing juniors. Player, I believe, I'm saying it in faith, she was already PIL player a year, but I believe she deserves to be state player a year and balled out in the State Championship game. Let's give it up for Ciara Ellington. And my last, but not least, my coaches who make me look way smarter than I am. That's Dexter LaSour. Candace Flynn. And Kenny Flavor Flav Cook, my hype man. Lastly, I wanna thank Curtis Wilson, Roy San Anderson, Scott Archer, our amazing staff and counselors and educators at our school. I literally believe Benson is a magical place. It is a magical place. I don't know what's in the water, but it is a magical place. And that's literal. Not that water. All right, so I guess we take, we know it's not in that water. All right. Yes, yes, absolutely.
I wanna say Coach Knox was alluding to the last time a PIL girls' basketball team won state tournament in the big classification. Jefferson won 2008, 2010, and 5A. People have a tendency to believe the 6A is best, so let's say it is for today's conversation. Then, it's been since 1982, a school year 81, 82, that we've had a girls' basketball team win a state championship. This is phenomenal. Give them a hand, please.
When we get ready to take the picture, I want you to hold the cake. You wanna hold it, wait till then? You can hold it now if you're ready. Okay. All right. You can stand, I got the proclamation.
Okay. A proclamation honoring Benson High School's 2019 State of Oregon Girls Basketball State Champions. Whereas, Board of Education and Superintendent recognized the significant accomplishment of the Benson High School Girls Basketball Team, who won the OSAA Class 6A State Championship on March 9th, 2019. Whereas, the Board of Education and Superintendent wished to thank students for their teamwork, tenacity, and sportsmanship throughout this season. Whereas, the Board of Education and Superintendent applaud the entire Benson Community of teachers, students, parents, neighbors, and the team's exceptional coach, Eric Knox, all of whom have supported and encouraged this team to be and play their very best. Now therefore, Board of Education and Superintendent proclaim March 19th, 2019, as a day to celebrate the historic success of the Benson Texters Girls Basketball Team.
Okay, we'll now move on to student and public comments. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes, we have five. And our first two speakers are Chris Riser and Beth Blumklotz.
As people make their way to the table, the board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices or papers. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment. If you want to follow up from the board office, please contact Ms. Hewson or Roseanne Powell, the board manager. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Hewson to distribute to the board and superintendent. Requests to make public comments should be made ahead of time by contacting the board officer, checking with Ms. Hewson prior to the start of the board meeting, to see if there are spots available. Once the board meeting has started, we can no longer accept new requests for public comment. Okay. Presenters will have a total of 3 minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first 2 minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have 1 minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation, and go ahead.
My name is Chris Riser, R-I-S-E-R. Good evening. Governance, I once heard, is knowing what is important, what it means, and what to do about it. Which is why I did not come here to talk to members of the board or to the administration. I came to speak to the people about the board, the administration, and governance. Because they are not doing what is required of them in this singular moment of human history. They don't seem to know what is important, what it means, or what to do about it. Our children do not need a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Our children need a guaranteed and viable future. Hate crime is on the rise everywhere. One racist left 50 dead in New Zealand and praised our president as a symbol of white identity. One racist slashed the throats of 3 individuals on the max in Portland. Portland Public Schools overseen by the individual sitting at that desk was found by a statewide audit to create barriers to the success of our students of color, while simultaneously accelerating the success of students of European descent. PPS is actively deepening the educational debt owed to the students this system has failed to serve since 1859. Payment is overdue, and they're stacking up interest. And what is the status of ethnic studies in PPS mandated in 2016 to be offered in every high school in the district by this past fall? Do you or your neighbor's high school's kids have access to this curriculum without which American history is nothing but the story of indigenous Europeans becoming white? We don't need so-called instructional leadership driven by the fear of artificial punishments and a ravenous effort to turn the next generation of human beings into test scores so that these folks can say that they've learned. We need transformational leadership to remake all 100,000 of our public schools in this country, 80 schools in this city. country, 80 schools in this city, into research laboratories for democratic action in the face of an authoritarian, totalitarian, and fascist regime that might not even give up power in 2021. Remember, fascism is not only the hatred of non-Aryan peoples, but it is the idea that business is the best model for government decision-making. It's corporations like Nike having outsized influence on legislatures and school boards while failing to pay their taxes to the same. We need our schools to be labs for solutions to racism, sexism, gender violence, class inequality, houselessness, and climate change, for goodness sake. The U N, I P C C issued a report stating conservatively that we have six to 12 years to limit warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius below pre-industrial levels. Raise your hand if you've read the 20-page policy report for policymakers. As 16-year-old Greta Thunberg says, "For way too long, the people in power have gotten away with not doing anything to fight the climate crisis, but we'll make sure that they will not get away with it any longer. We've done our homework and they have not," from the mouths of babes. "One-third of the Himalayan ice caps will melt by the end of the century." Journalist Darja Mill states that "we have about three degrees warming already baked into the oceans." The one thing that we need more than hope is action. Once we start to act, hope is everywhere. So instead of looking for hope, Greta Thunberg tells us, "Look for action. Then and only then will hope come." So stop waiting for that leadership to do what is right. We're the ones we've been waiting for. Take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Beth Blumklotz, special education school bus driver. Thank you for having me here today. I have to put my glasses on, so I won't be looking at you, but I'm speaking to you guys tonight. Overall, our greatest desire is to settle a fair and equitable contract from beginning to completion as expeditiously and as amicably as possible. The process for last year's negotiations left a feeling of distrust in the mouths of us drivers. The district's negotiation team assured us on multiple occasions that they were bringing the information back to you, the board. However, we found out that that was not true, so we began showing up to all the different remaining school board meetings. We understand that you were not here in years past where a lot of decisions were made to not give us like wage increases and a fair and equitable contract. However, we do feel that the attorney that you hired before was extremely disrespectful. Other union groups also said the same thing. We wholeheartedly disagree with having him and we ask you to reconsider if he is on your list to join us this year. Last year's contract results was a step in the right direction and we had to fight for every inch. It really felt unnecessary for us drivers and embarrassing for the district. In an effort to not go through what we went through last year, we're taking the time to share our concerns today. We really want to make it clear that if we come back here during the negotiations, something is not going right. Last year, the driver's side negotiated with integrity. We did our research, we provided documentation whenever we were asked, so we're hoping that our history encourages the district side to not waste time and money. What you experienced last year, the driver's energy, the persistence, and the dedication is just a fraction of what we're feeling this year. The drivers have made it clear on multiple occasions in our meetings that they still want a fair increase in better working conditions. We're really looking forward to collaborating and building a bridge of open and honest communication. We'd like to remind you that we are employees who work for and with you. We are an integral part of the Portland Public School Systems. And we very much appreciate those of you who did the ride-alongs. We believe your eyes were opened and you had an opportunity to see a smidgen of what we go through and what we do each and every day. We are special education school bus drivers and we love what we do. Our students and their parents deserve consistency with regards to who their drivers are. We want to continue and we want to be able to provide our families as well with the best support as possible. We've lost so many drivers last year and this year, even with the previous increase. And the drivers this year who've left, they would have stayed if we had a more fair and equitable contract. And we did start working and began the school year on time. So we would really just like you to please to pay attention to what's going on in negotiations with us. And last part is just that, I looked up today the job description and I feel like this might be part of our problem. It's just so brief and so we can ask for less, we can offer less money with a brief description. If we provide everybody with everything, this is our handbook of procedures and policies and responsibilities that we have, and if people knew what they were coming into, some of them wouldn't even apply because they have no idea what they're getting themselves into with what's required with our position and what we, you know, the amount of responsibility that we have. For some reason, I'm feeling nervous tonight. I don't know why. It's been a while, I guess. But thank you, thank you, thank you.
Next, we have Jimmy Applehands and Dee White.
Hi, again. Jimmy Applehands, A-P-P-E-L-H-A-N-Z. I would like to thank the school board for giving me the time to speak tonight on behalf of Portland Public School Bus Drivers and Amalgamated Transit Union 757. I also want to thank you for reaching out to me to include a special needs school bus driver voice in the guiding coalition that just wrapped up last weekend. I'm looking forward to see the installation when it's up in May. It was a really great time to be there and I felt that I could speak freely and let them know what I was thinking. We are excited about starting our negotiations sooner this year with the hopes of a speedy and fair contract. And I don't want to dwell too much on the past, but I feel that I need to reiterate three main points I made last time I spoke back in August. One, I don't know if you didn't have a proposal when we first met back in June of 2017, or if you just didn't get around to giving it to us during the first day of negotiations, but it is imperative for both parties to have and exchange proposals on day one. Number two, do not bring outside lawyer Dan Rowan back to the table. Frankly, he wasted everyone's time and money and we are not alone in thinking this either. Many of the other unions commented about this. Portland Federation of School Professionals specifically called him out during their contract signing last year. Three, we were told last time during negotiations that there was no driver shortage when there clearly was and there still is. While we have hired a few more drivers, we have lost a lot of experienced drivers since the beginning of the school year. Our dispatchers are driving every single day. They're driving routes when they need to be getting other things done, including making sure our route changes get to us in time and payroll. Managers are driving our routes, they're filling in on the radio and dispatch while those workers are out filling on routes. And let's move on to something we can all agree on. Portland Public Schools are seriously underfunded. I encourage the school board and everyone in this room to let your legislators know this. Lucky for you all that the Joint Committee on Ways and Means will be in town this Thursday, the 21st, for a public hearing at the P C C Cascade Campus, M A H B Building, Auditorium 104, from 5:30 to 7:30. This would be a great opportunity for people to speak directly to them and I encourage everyone to do so. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Dee White. I gave this testimony on February 20th, 2019, to Portland City Council. This was the seventh time in nine months that I have spoken before the council about the high levels of lead in our drinking water. And this is all over Portland, not just in the schools. It is well-established that even at low levels, lead is a potent irreversible neurotoxin that is especially damaging to pregnant women and young children's developing brains. A recent groundbreaking study also links lead to significant heart-related deaths in the U.S. every year among adults. E P A scientists and water quality engineers nationwide know, the more corrosive the water, the more it will pull lead out of the plumbing and into our drinking water. Portland has been an outlier for years with historically high levels, while similar cities such as Seattle got to work decades ago and have shown significantly lower levels of lead ever since. Our local water officials have obfuscated on the reasons why our lead levels remain so much higher than Seattle's, over three times higher, in fact. Why aren't our government officials at the state and local level earnestly and aggressively addressing the serious problem that has caused a silent public health threat and infrastructure damage in this community? Portland remains at the top of the heap with the highest lead levels of all large public water systems in the U.S. Last year, Commissioner Fish proclaimed, "There is no lead in our water." This is absolutely deceptive wordplay since it conflates Portland's pure but corrosive, bull-run source water with drinking water that the Bureau has failed to properly manage. It is disingenuous to pass blame to the schools in 2016, then to customer plumbing in 2017 and 18, when it has been your responsibility, meaning the Portland Water Bureau, to accept responsibility as you are legally required to do and urgently protect our drinking water now as you, meaning the Portland Water Bureau, should have done over 20 years ago. How is this acceptable?
Thank you.
Lastly, we have Kavi.
My name is Kavi Keen, K-A-V-I, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Peace in Schools, the nonprofit organization to teach mindfulness into the Portland Public School curriculum. And I just want to be here to share my story with Peace in Schools as a former Wilson High School student. And during my time, I came from a really not-so-good background of someone who's transgender and also Vietnamese. However, at the same time, I was rejected from my family and then also, at the same time, experienced a lot of ableism, racism, and even classism because Wilson was a school that didn't really see me for who I was until I found Peace in Schools where my life was changed pretty much, where I did not need to be an alcoholic during my time at Wilson High School. And even the fact that I found clarity through meditation. And when I heard that there wasn't going to be funding for Peace in Schools, my mind was shocked because I can think of that student, someone like me, or just that junior year student, junior high school student, who's struggling right now. And I want them to know that I'm speaking for them, to know that they do have that chance and if they can still continue school regardless and if, excuse me, rough day. But, excuse me, but, what's the call? But I do believe that if we're not able to fund Peace in Schools, it would be a big mistake and we'll be missing a large opportunity for many high schoolers. Thank you. And, yeah, but that's all I have for today, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again, everybody, for your comments. Next item is the Student Representatives Report. And we've made a slight change in the order of presentations that I hope will continue going forward. Up till now, the Student Representatives Report has been at the end of the meeting, which puts a burden on the student representative, so we are moving it to the top. A, because we need to be attentive to the other responsibilities that the student representative has, but also because this is giving pride of place to students right at the top of the meeting where they ought to be.
Thank you, Chair. I wholeheartedly agree. I think this is a great change and I'm excited to be able to give an update on what I've been doing and what the District Student Council has been doing further, or at the beginning of the meeting, so everyone can hear too. So just a quick update, a lot has been going on since the last time I gave an update. The District Student Council just last week had a policy, or went to the Policy and Governance Committee meeting to go over the changes and additions we've made to our policy that governs my position as well as the District Student Council, and we're hoping to get that into first reading after the next Policy and Governance meeting. So we're really excited about that and we're wanting to move that forward by the end of my term this year. Also, as it was mentioned before tonight, we have had, we did close off the last meeting of our guiding coalition just this weekend. I had to count, but we had three District Student Council members be part of that guiding coalition as well as me. And we've put a lot of time into the students. At those meetings, we had a panel at our second meeting that students could talk about what they thought about their schools and how we can go forward as well. So I really just wanted to thank all the people that have been working on the visioning meetings and we're going to announce what those goals are going to be shortly. And then also just real quick, time is flying, it's amazing. And just after, so according to our policy, just after return from spring break, the District Student Council will be starting the process for our vote on next year's student representative already. So I'll keep the board and the public updated on that as well. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Director Moore. You're going to make it a hard act to follow now every time. Good evening, directors, students, families, educators, viewing public. That was a wonderful celebration. Congratulations again to all of our student athletes on remarkable winter seasons. I was feeling a little vertically challenged earlier, but thank you for representing the P I L so graciously. So it's been a busy past few days, so I'm going to focus my comments on that, starting on this morning's event, actually. This morning was the annual Portland Workforce Alliance Expo, which brings together thousands of students to the Portland Convention Center to explore potential careers. We had over 200 companies and public agencies represented on the convention center floor and it was heartening to see so many of our students pouring in to visit booths. I want to thank all the business and trade partners who participated and encouraged them, as I did this morning in my greeting, to make sure and consider hiring a Portland Public School student as a summer intern. Nick's making a lot of appearances here in my report tonight. I also want to thank all of our students who participated, including the featured panel you see here on the screen, starting on the left with Aurora, who's a Jefferson senior. And I just wanted to give you a glimpse of some of their comments and what they shared. She let us know that she intends to be a special education teacher. So that's wonderful. She was very clear in her conviction that she wants equity for students whose abilities differ from some of their peers. On the right, we heard from Johanna, a Roosevelt senior whose family fled the Congo for Kenya and then immigrated to the United States. After spending time with a local architectural firm, she now has the goal of becoming an architect and specializing in interior design. So congratulations, Johanna, on your goals there. There were many inspiring stories shared here, including Kevin here, who's with the microphone in the picture from Gresham High, whose internship inspired him to pursue a career in the trades. And really demonstrates how our students benefit when they have mentors within our local business and industry partners. And I think our coach Knox put it well earlier, when they know there's an adult who cares, it makes all the world of difference. It was a busy weekend. Flew back from Washington, D.C. from attending the Council of Great City Schools Annual Legislative and Policy Conference. The Council of Great City Schools represents the 74 of the largest school districts in America, serving over 7 million of the students in this country. I have the privilege of serving as an elected member of the executive committee and I would like to report out that at our business meeting this past Sunday, my colleagues on the council's board of directors unanimously re-elected me for a new three-year term. So this gathering annually focuses on key education priority issues and provided the opportunity to interact with elected congressional leaders. And we received some federal legislative updates. I'm going to share a little summary of some position statements that were shared with our directors. Among those priorities are in lobbying with, not lobbying, sharing with our congressional leaders, a request for increased funding for Title 1, 2, 4, and I D E A formula grants, federal support for school building modernization efforts around the country, a request that Congress take up approval of a DACA or Dream Act bipartisan fix, which impacts hundreds of thousands of students served by council. of thousands of students served by council member districts, a clear stated position on the opposition to private school vouchers, and a meaningful school safety and gun violence legislation to protect our students. As the Council, we are concerned about the proposed $8.5 billion budget cut to K-12 being proposed by the U.S. Department of Education. Yesterday, I was part of a small delegation and met with U.S. Department of Education Secretary Betsy DeVos to discuss a number of items, including continued efforts across our states to implement the Every Student Succeeds Act, otherwise known as ESSO. A few weeks ago, we convened students representing some of the district's cultural diversity to participate in an engaging conversation about the role of student voice in affecting systemic change. You can see sort of the physical declaration in the picture here about the power of giving students a platform. Here they are occupying the seats at the dais. Dr. Curtis Acosta worked with the students that evening, masterfully facilitating a dialogue that gleaned information about students' personal hopes and dreams while imparting words of wisdom to both students and staff about collaboration-directed activism, critical thinking, and identity. Students shared candidly about their challenges and the importance of caring adults, there's that theme again, and seeing themselves represented in their academic experience. At the close of the evening, students activated their voices by participating in a visioning activity to determine what they want the future of public education to look like. And speaking of which, on the topic of visioning, it was mentioned here earlier, we commenced our visioning process this past fall with the goal of engaging the entire Portland community, or certainly a cross-section of stakeholders, to help us determine a vision for P.P.S. And this was our mantra, "Let's, let's dream together." And we've been doing that for about six months now, a community-wide exploration of the potential of our district to prepare our students for the future, putting our collective imagination, creativity, and best ideas to work. We purposely structured our efforts to be inclusive and representative of our dynamic and diverse P.P.S. community. Our core team works regularly with our consultants on design, logistics, event planning, and execution. The Guiding Coalition serves as our steering committee and is made up of our board directors, central administrative staff, students, parents, educators, civic leaders, and community members. And together, we've reached out to thousands, thousands of individuals throughout Portland with dozens of engagement opportunities, ranging from small group sessions to bigger come-one, come-all school-based meetings. What we have found is genuine enthusiasm on the part of the community to be a part of this process. And as was mentioned, just this last weekend, we hosted the third and final two-day meeting of our P.P.S. Visioning Guiding Coalition. We spent Friday evening and much of the day Saturday honing in on three foundational areas. The first, the graduate portrait. What, it asks and hopes to define what knowledge, skills, dispositions, and mindsets will students need to be successful in their lives and careers. We also spent a lot of time talking about the support of adults or village that will be required to support that kind of a graduate portrait. What knowledge, skills, dispositions, and mindsets will adults need in order to support students to attain the graduate portrait? And then, thirdly, then what are the system shifts? How does the entire district need to shift in order to support that kind of vision for students' success? And so, as, another shot of Nick there. As we've gathered our hopes and dreams for our students, we've begun to see the early images of what you, what we want to see in the P.P.S. graduate. In other words, our community has emerged essential core skills, knowledge, and mindsets for our 50,000 students we'll need to have by the time they leave our school system. So, as I did earlier at the Portland Workforce Alliance Expo, I'm going to give you a little sneak preview of the emerging draft student portrait. It includes descriptors like, "Our students should be competent global stewards and ambassadors." "We know they need to be resilient, flexible, lifelong learners." "They're going to require strong social-emotional literacy skills." "We're going to want them to have a racial equity and social justice orientation." "We know they'll need to be collaborative, creative, innovative problem solvers, and it's going to be important that they're powerful, effective, empathetic communicators." So, we're excited that we're getting close to a final product, but I wanted to give a quick little overview of our process to date. We have some next steps. We'll have a dedicated board work session with our superintendent's leadership team, the core team, and our Prospect Studios consultants on April 2nd, for those who want to hear many more details. And then, we're going to have our last community event, which will actually be a physical installation, which will be on display on May 11th. We want to encourage everyone to participate in that. And then, we're working towards a final document with the board on June 18th. Our hope is that by the close of June, that our board is prepared and confident to vote on a resolution to adopt the P.P.S. vision. So, wanted to make sure you were aware of those upcoming dates. Feedback has been very positive. We went through a little final exercise on Saturday. Folks listed many of their thank-yous, and I want to extend mine. I want to thank everyone who's given their time and talents to, to this work, from everyone on our core team, to the Guiding Coalition, to the Board of Education for being so actively engaged, but in particular to the broad P.P.S. school community. I think your engagement has been absolutely integral to getting us to where we are now, which is approaching the final stages of realizing one of our goals for this school year, and that's articulating a long-term vision for the Portland Public Schools. So, thank you. That concludes my report for tonight. I want to wish everyone a safe and wonderful spring break next week.
The next item on the agenda is the I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce the item? And I'm going to ask Director Bailey to manage the board discussion on this topic, since he's taken a leading role in developing tonight's presentation.
Sure. And I'm going to limit my participation to introducing a couple of guests, actually, we have that are helping us on this topic. Mandy Putney, Policy and Development Manager for the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT, is here to provide an overview of the project, and she's joined by Megan Channel, the major projects manager also for, for ODOT. And it looks like they have some supporting team members as well for what is sure to be an engaging conversation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Can you hear us okay here? So, an update to who is speaking to you this evening. I am Megan Channel. I'm the ODOT Region One Major Projects Manager and the Project Manager for the I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project, and I am joined by my colleague at the City of Portland.
Art Pierce. I'm Policy Planning and Projects Manager for the Bureau of Transportation for P-Bot.
All right. So, we're here tonight to provide a project overview and share with you the information about the project's environmental assessment. The ODOT and the City of Portland are longstanding partners in this important transportation investment in our central city, with the purpose of this project to create improvements to our transportation system that will serve all users in the community. So, tonight, we'll walk you through the proposed project, the timeline and process, and the current phase that we're in, the key environmental findings, and we'll focus specifically around the issues with Harriet Tubman Middle School. We'll also talk about how to engage in the environmental assessment process and next steps for the project. So, this is an overall timeline. Again, it's been a number of years in the making, building from a robust planning process in 2010 to 2012, and we picked up with the environmental process in 2017 and reached an important milestone of publishing the environmental assessment in February. We're in the midst of the 45-day public comment review, and the public comments are accepted through April 1st. That doesn't mean that that is the last that we hear from the public. We'll have a robust community engagement process as we look towards the design and construction phases of the project, as well, with design kicking off in spring of 2018, carrying through the end of 2022 and construction as early as 2023. So, I'm going to turn it over to Art to kind of give us some background on how we got to where we are, and then I'll jump back to giving a project overview.
Right. Thank you. As someone who's been with P-Bot for 20 years, or a little over 20 years, I can testify to the fact this has been a long conversation between the City of Portland and the State of Oregon in terms of deliberating on what might be the right level of improvements in this area. As you will note from the graphic, this conversation really started in earnest in the late 80s, in which the sort of scale and project cost of the project improvements was quite larger than it is today. And through a whole series of collaborative processes and public input, the project's improvement scale has shrunk considerably, and the cost has shrunk considerably. One of the most notable moments in which we really came to the project that is now being proposed through the EA was through the North Northeast Quadrant Plan. This was about a year and a half planning process where they looked at over 70 overall different options of what might be the right improvement for this location, and that was sort of helped governed by a 30-person advisory committee. So, a pretty lengthy process. That specific proposal, the proposal and facility plan that's now within the EA, was brought before the Portland City Council in 2012 through the North Northeast Quadrant Process, and again through the Central City Plan Process just last year.
Yeah, I think in May.
In May of last year. So, two recent council actions essentially confirming the, the scale and scope of the So, as a, as a refresher and reminder that, you know, the area that we are talking about for the project is the area between I-405 and I-84, along I-5 where the, the section of I-5 narrows to two lanes, and includes both improvements within the highway environment as well as surface improvements there. Of course, note to this specific conversation, you'll see Harriet Tubman Middle School is highlighted there in purple, I guess it is. One of the other, I think, very important parts of the conversation that has really been sort of welcomed additional influence has been the work with Albina Vision on what is some of sort of the broader contextual vision that might be able to be brought to this location. I believe Albina Vision's come and presented to this group perhaps in the last year or so, yeah. Okay. So, that also helps, I think, bring some additional, you know. So, this is a conceptual illustration of the, the changes, and we'll show in more detail through a video and some other drawings of what the specifics of the project will be. But it includes auxiliary lane changes between, along the section between I-84 and 405, and then surface street changes as well as caps over the freeway, specifically where you're seeing those highway covers shown on the drawing. The project does also include a new bike pedestrian bridge at the Clackamas Street alignment, which is in purple at the bottom of the screen, and then a change between having a crossing at Flint Street to having a new crossing at Hancock-Dixon on the north end that does make some changes to the, the area around the school just, just off this screen, which I think we have better images of later. So, we have a video that gives a little better description than what I just attempted to do, but I think that's, your IT department is doing that for us, so we'll just pause, maybe, yeah.
The I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project was created by the Oregon Department of Transportation and the City of Portland with input from the community to plan the transportation future of inner north and northeast Portland. The project will improve both local streets and I-5 in the Rose Quarter area, support economic growth, and result in a more reliable, safer, and better-connected community. The project will improve safety and operations on I-5 by adding continuous 12-foot shoulders and a new ramp-to-ramp lane in both directions of the highway between I-84 and I-405. The ramp-to-ramp lanes will give drivers more time and space to merge, reducing frequent crashes and congestion points, ultimately saving over 2.5 million hours of travel time a year. The project provides new connections across I-5. The first is a new path over I-5 for people walking, biking, and rolling from the northeast Clackamas Street area to the Rose Quarter, creating a safer, more comfortable way to get around. The crossing will be a key part of the city's green loop, improving bike and pedestrian access between the Willamette River, the Rose Quarter, and the Lloyd District. The new replacement bridges over I-5 will be in the form of highway covers. These covers will provide space for wider sidewalks, protected bike lanes, and opportunities for new community spaces. The project team will work with the local community to determine how the new space on top of the covers can become the best asset for the neighborhood. The project will introduce a number of safety-related improvements for bicycles and pedestrians. Here is a closer look at a concept for the Williams-Widler multi-use path. When the project is complete, Williams Avenue between Widler and Ramsey will be exclusive to buses, cyclists, and pedestrians. A new 36-foot-wide multi-use path along Williams Avenue will provide separation from vehicles for cyclists and pedestrians moving through the interchange. It will also reduce bicycle-pedestrian conflicts with the existing I-5 South on-ramp at Widler. The project team will work with the community as elements of the path are designed, including the space between bicycles and pedestrians. These improvements enhance key connections in the local street network, address Portland's Vision Zero safety priorities, and make the area more accessible to people who walk, bike, roll, or access transit. One of the new highway covers will span I-5 and connect Vancouver Avenue with a new road that links North Hancock to North Dixon. The existing Flint Street Bridge will be removed, and North Flint will end at northeast Tillamook Street on the north side of I-5. The Hancock-Dixon Crossing and multi-use path will provide a new direct connection between the north and northeast neighborhoods and lower Albina. The crossing will provide an alternative to the Broadway and Widler intersections at Vancouver and Williams. Below, at the highway level, you can again see the new ramp-to-ramp lanes that will allow drivers more space to merge or eliminate the need to merge for the roughly 99% of drivers who use this segment of I-5 for local connections. The reduction of traffic weaving on I-5 is expected to significantly reduce crash rates and improve travel times during the busiest times of the day. As we turn and head south, you can see a driver's view on I-5. Here, you can see the ramp-to-ramp lane that connects I-405 to I-84 and experience traveling under the highway covers. The I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project is an opportunity to create community connections. The project seeks to strengthen the area as a highly accessible and multimodal hub for moving people and goods. For example, improvements at the Broadway-Widler interchange, which sees over 5,000 bikers a day, will improve safety and enhance the biker commuter experience. Improvements on I-5 will allow freight trucks to move more smoothly through the area, getting to their destinations quicker. And the transportation improvements will act as a catalyst for future redevelopment, including high-density development that includes employment and affordable housing that is consistent with current city plans. ODOT and the City of Portland are planning for an improved Rose Quarter area where people walking, biking, and rolling can comfortably cross a bridge over I-5 that is designed just for them, where cars and freight trucks on I-5 have more space and time to merge while traveling through the area, and where getting from the Broadway Bridge to the Lloyd District is easier for all. We encourage you to join us in the ongoing community conversations. Get involved and provide your input at ifiverosequarter.org.
Well, we're switching back to the PowerPoint. While that looked like it could be a final design, I want to emphasize that it's conceptual, really based on a preliminary concept, and we have a lot of design work, work with the community to do to confirm specifically how those elements, including what goes on top of the highway covers, the Clackamas Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge, and the Hancock-Dixon Crossing, what all those elements will look like. So, a framework by no means a final design, but representing a concept for what could be as part of the project. So, as I mentioned, we are in the middle of the environmental assessment public comment period, kind of taking a step back. What is an environmental assessment? This is a federal document that's required when there's federal funding or a federal action to be taken on a project. And with this project being on an interstate system, it does require a federal action. And so, the environmental assessment is building off of the planning work that Art spoke to and comparing the recommended design concept, or what we call the build alternative, the project, with a no-build alternative, or not building the project. And we project out to year 2045 to really look at what are the long-term impacts and benefits of the project 20 years out from construction, so that we ensure that we're looking at those long-term elements with the significant transportation investment. The Federal Highway Administration will take the findings from the environmental assessment, along with all of the public comment that's received, to inform the NIPA decision document. And there, we selected an environmental assessment because we couldn't confirm or presume upfront whether the project had significant impacts or not significant impacts. And so, the environmental assessment process is that first stage to really help you do that evaluation, looking at the same level of technical reports that you would for an environmental impact statement, but doing the environmental assessment analysis upfront to confirm what the level of impact would be. These are the environmental study topics that we looked at. Again, they're the same that would be included in an environmental impact statement, studied at the same level. impact statement, studied at the same level in the technical reports, which then feed into the environmental document. And so, tonight, we are going to focus on a few of these topic areas based on our conversations and coordination that we had with Portland Public School staff and where we think you might have the most interest. So, for motor vehicle transportation operations with the new auxiliary lanes and full shoulders on I-5, it does provide drivers more time and space to merge and weave, and with the shoulders also allows disabled vehicles to move out of the way of through traffic or emergency responders to use that space to get to an incident if they need to. But those elements do show a significant improvement in operations on the highway system, saving drivers over 2.5 million hours of delay each year, and less time in your cars, more time with your families. And on the local street system, we also see some improvements in the operations as well, and all of the local intersections within the interchange area continue to operate with acceptable levels of service for both state and city standards. From a transportation safety perspective, again, with the improvements on I-5, they do, they will reduce frequent crashes that we see today with this segment of I-5 having the highest crash rate in the state of Oregon. There also are a number of improvements to the local street system, including greater separation between modes of people driving, people walking, people biking, and people rolling or accessing transit. And so, that does add to significant safety improvements for all modes on the local street system. This is an example of a couple of those areas where we do see significant and improved separation between modes, the first being that thirty-six-foot-wide multi-use path through the Broadway-Widler corridor and the new Clackamas Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge south of the interchange, coupled with the Hancock-Dixon Crossing north of the interchange. Those two new east-west crossings give people traveling through this area an option to cross I-5 without having to go through the busy Broadway-Widler interchange. When we look specifically to the location near Harriet Tubman with Flint Street, Flint Street today is used as the, as a primary route for people driving, freight included, from north northeast to access the Broadway Bridge. With the project, Flint Street south of Tillamook and crossing I-5 is removed, and then a new Hancock-Dixon connection provides that east-west connection that the video and Art spoke to. Flint Street would turn into Tillamook Street, so access to Tubman Middle School would still be available via Flint through Tillamook to the south or Russell to the north as it is today. And so, as you look towards the future route to the Broadway Bridge with Flint Street being closed, vehicles would no longer be able to use Flint, meaning all of the cars doing the cut-through traffic in front of the middle school would no longer be making those trips, freight included. They would either remain on Vancouver and have the ability to use the Hancock-Dixon Connection or stay on Russell to access the Broadway Bridge via MLK or Interstate. In terms of air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, we did a model following federal and state standards for emission projections. And regardless of building the project or not, as we look to year 2045, with increased fuel efficiency and a move towards electric vehicles in our fleet, there is a trend towards a reduction in air pollutant emissions. When you look and compare building the project to not building the project in year 2045, there's a slight decrease in emissions associated with building the project because with the improved operations on I-5, you have less stop-and-go traffic, less idling, which are significant contributors to air pollutant emissions. And that is, same with the greenhouse gas emissions as well. There is a slight reduction in greenhouse gas emissions as you compare the project to not building the project. We also did an evaluation to look at carbon monoxide hotspots, and none were identified in the project area. In terms of noise, again, we did a robust noise analysis as part of the environmental assessment and did find, and did have noise monitors and modeling done near Harriet Tubman and Lillis-Albina Park. And we did find that there would be small increases in noise levels associated with the project. However, those noise levels would be at a level that would be less than detectable by a human ear. However, because, because the existing conditions present noise levels that exceed state thresholds, we have proposed a sound wall in front of Harriet Tubman Middle School and the park that would reduce noise levels below the existing noise levels today. So, you can see the numbers here. So, the existing noise levels today are at a forty-nine DBA. Without the project, they're projected to stay the same. And then, with the project and the provision of the sound wall, reducing down to forty-five DBA. In terms of construction, the project will have short-term construction impacts. The project construction period overall is expected to be about four to five years. That does not mean that the entire project area is under construction for that full period. We will be developing in the design phase and with contractor input, a construction phasing plan and staging plan to help minimize impacts to uses such as Harriet Tubman Middle School and the traveling public through that construction period. But that said, yes, there will be road closures. Yes, there will be traffic delays during construction. But we'll be, one of the mitigation measures in the environmental assessment is to develop a traffic control plan that would work through in partnership with the City of Portland and making sure that we have safe and signed detour routes and communication with the public to keep everybody moving. There will also be dust and exhaust and noise from the construction equipment, but with the implementation of best management practices as specified in the environmental assessment, using dust control measures and limiting sort of the equipment hours and time that they can be idling would reduce those impacts. As you look to Harriet Tubman Middle School specifically, the construction activities, we will, of course, continue to coordinate with Portland Public Schools, looking towards major construction activities to happen during summer periods to avoid impacts to, to the students and staff at the school, also looking at nighttime and weekend opportunities for construction. But main message there is that we are committed to continuing to work with you and Portland Public School staff in ensuring that we minimize construction impacts to the students and staff at Harriet Tubman. And construction on I-5 would not impact the school structure. Our design team did meet with Portland Public School staff prior to the opening of Harriet Tubman Middle School to discuss the slope stability on the west side. And through those conversations, at this point in design, did not find that construction of the retaining wall in that location would impact the school structure. So, those are the key findings from the EA. There are a number of ways to comment, and we have held a number of events during the public comment period, including an open house and a public hearing earlier this month. Comments, of course, are welcome, written letters sent in via email or mail. You can also leave a recorded phone message or check out the online open house and submit comments electronically. As we move forward, the public engagement process will continue to be robust. We'll be standing up a number of committees during the design phase, including an overarching Community Advisory Committee to help inform and advise on the larger project. We'll also have two focused committees, one on DBE or disadvantaged business enterprise and workforce opportunity, which is a program that we are creating to promote wealth generation and maximize, maximize participation from the local, small, and minority-owned business community as we work through design and construction. We'll also be creating an urban design committee that will help us answer those key questions again around what are, what is going on top of the highway covers, what will that Clackamas Bicycle and Pedestrian Bridge look like, what is the distribution of bicycle and pedestrian facilities on the local street systems, and what will they look like. And then, with that, public urban design charrettes and workshops throughout 2019. So, with that, I want to thank you for your time and available should you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, that's staff. Yes, no? I, I have one, but I'll save mine for the end. Go ahead.
Um, well, our staff drew up a memo outlining some issues that they have identified that, that do not seem to have been clearly sufficiently explored during the initial assessment, environmental assessment. And I think the memo's been posted, and it includes a great many things, including air quali, and most of this is focused on the area around Tubman. So, the question of air quality, and my understanding is that the monitoring equipment was not placed near the school. So, it sort of begs the question, how do you know that there's not going to be an impact at the school if you haven't monitored the air, the current air quality at the school? And if you've done any modeling, if it's not based on the conditions at that location, how, how can we be assured that it's not going to have a negative impact, negative health impact, either short-term or long-term, on students and staff? We have, you know, just the work that we have done around Tubman, we've done a great deal of monitoring of air quality, and we've taken, we've spent a great deal of money to mitigate the current conditions. And the kinds of changes to traffic patterns that are outlined in this proposal seem alarming to me. And, and I got to wonder, what kind of impact is it going to have on the air quality? And have you sufficiently assessed that to date? And our staff noted a whole bunch of other things. The sound wall that's being proposed.
Why don't we do one at a time to give them a chance to respond?
Okay. Well, let me, let me, okay. I'll limit my little, my questions to air quality. But I think the sound wall might have an impact on air quality because some of the modeling that, that has been done to date has been looking at the impact of building a wall and how that, how that changes airflow. And there's a real question about whether adding a wall is going to actually, is going to mitigate either this, we haven't looked at sound, but is it going to mitigate the pollution issues or is it actually going to direct the flow of air onto Tubman? So, okay, I'll stop there.
Sure. So, in terms of the air quality evaluation, we did look at the entire project area, including a specific look near Harriet Tubman to knowing with it being a sensitive resource and receptor. And overall, in the project area, including at Tubman, there is not an increase in pollutant emissions as part of the project with the improved operations. So, less idling of vehicles on I-5, there actually is a slight reduction in emissions as part of the project as compared to not building the project. So...
Okay. And that assumes that there will be a long-term decrease in congestion. And Lord knows, I am no expert in this, but I've read a number of things, a number of research studies, okay, for the layman, I will qualify that, that strongly suggests that just increasing capacity over the long haul doesn't in fact decrease the, the carrying capacity. I mean, it doesn't decrease congestion, it doesn't decrease traffic. It actually increases it over time because people get used to more space. So, you know, okay, I'm going to take I-5 now, whereas I might not have otherwise. That's a pretty big assumption, I think.
The, yeah, the, the project is not adding new through lanes to I-5, it's adding auxiliary lanes or ramp-to-ramp connections. So, the lane, when you enter from one entrance, it gets off right at the next exit. So, this is carrying a new ramp-to-ramp connection from I-84 to I-405 in both directions. And so, there's still only two through lanes in each direction as part of this project. So, it's not a capacity-increasing project. In terms of the long-term assumptions made in the air quality model, it is looking to year 2045 with or without the project, it's less about congestion and more about increased fuel efficiency and the type of vehicle fleet that you'll see on the system that regardless of doing the project, does show a decrease in emissions. And then, when you layer on the project, again, with the reduced idling on I-5, looking out to year 2045 and traffic projections to that point is showing a reduction in emissions.
Well, I can appreciate your point of view on that. We've been waiting for years for the Oregon Legislature to deal with diesel, and we're still waiting, and it looks like we're going to wait a couple more years. So, and that's a huge...
It'll come right after the money.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, does ODOT have a position on clean diesel trucks?
Not that I'd be able to speak to.
I would just like to add on to Director Moore's comments. I don't expect you to respond to this. Also, on air quality, there is the issue of the lids to the freeway you're going to be adding. And we know that there are examples, it depends on the local topography, but there are examples where lids effectively serve as chimneys for pollution that occurs in this direction. It would be further to the south. So, if those go on, it is perfectly possible that we may be dramatically increasing the pollution at Harriet Tubman because it would include not just the pollution from I-5, but also the pollution from I-84. So, we are very concerned about that and hope to have our people at Portland State be doing some modeling on it. But I don't believe that any has been done up to this point.
What's the current crash rate in the area?
The current crash rate is, so, there's over seven hundred crashes that we've seen in the five-year period on this segment, which is about three and a half times the state average.
The state average for a freeway that's...
For urban interstates.
Oh. Anything, oh, in terms of anything more on air quality? Anybody want to raise anything? Just from a citizen point of view, I have to wonder about what the air quality is going to be like on those covered areas since there's, many of that would be so close to the edge of the freeway that, I mean, we spent millions on Tubman. Why wouldn't there be a similar effect? You don't have to answer that. Because I, I think we want to keep our focus, well, feel free to comment on any aspect. I think we want to keep our focus on the impact on our properties. Okay, anything more on air quality?
Well, you can't speak to it tonight. I'd be interested in... Well, you can't speak to it tonight, I'd be interested in getting a follow-up on what ODOT's policy generally is, so that, as we, since ODOT's technically a neighbor of Harriet Tubman, it would be nice to know what, just long-term, their position on that is. I think the other thing, the question I had just along this line is on one of these slides, it has pollutant emissions are slightly better with the project, and same thing with GH, G emissions being slightly better. So, um, is, so slightly better than bad may not be good, so I'm just curious, what you think the current standard of, that it's gonna be slightly better than? And whether that's something that, knowing that we have students there, young students there, what impact they would have on, obviously, it's obviously going through a residential neighborhood as well.
Right, so, um, it, existing conditions today in terms of air quality, we are in attainment zone for being under thresholds. That said, knowing with-
I'm sorry, um, can you say that in layman's terms?
Sure, sure, so what that means is that when you look at the Portland metro area, the, the air quality pollutants are not in exceedance of regional or state standards for what would be considered non-attainment, if you will. And so, and that, that's part of a, a larger modeling in the metro area. So, um, in terms of standards, as we look to your 2045, with the projection in emissions going down, we're still below the standards, and then again with the project further, albeit slightly, further reducing the emissions associated.
So does that modeling assume that there's no stricter standards adopted?
I think the, I am not a modeling expert, but I believe that the model does take into account sort of the projections in terms of improved fuel efficiency, movement toward electric fleets, and projections for, for standards for each of those, but not stricter regulatory standards. I, I, I don't actually know on that one, I can, yeah. I'd be interested to know that as well.
Just note, real quickly, you know, our, our Commissioner, Commissioner Udaley is very concerned about diesel emissions specifically, and so I think she would welcome talking more about specifics of this, so.
Haven't, haven't we been going in the wrong direction in terms of, if fuel efficiency in the last couple of years? Hasn't there been a sharp movement with the gas prices towards SUVs and less efficiency? So. Raises questions about your, your assumptions. And I would just wanna check if anything's changed, but from my understand, initially at least, you, you haven't released, uh, the assumptions and modeling that, that lie behind your assumptions on, um, air pollution?
So there's a technical report that is available on the Rose Quarter website that was published on February 15th with the environmental assessment. And then there was some subsequent data requests that are supplemental to that information, and so that is also available on the Rose Quarter website.
Does that have a complete set of assumptions going into your model and how they're modeled?
It does, yeah, and all of the technical reports that are on the website also provide that information.
Okay, because we, we spoke with a couple of transportation consultants, one of whom is a former ODOT official who said assumptions weren't there, so. We, we can talk offline about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, more questions on air?
Anything more on air? Well, just one, one more historical context. From what I understand, when I-5 was initially planned, the school district said, you're building it too close to then Elliott School, and, uh, ODOT went ahead anyway. And here we are, years later, finding out how bad the health effects have been on children and having to spend millions to clean up the air inside the school and not being able to do much about the air immediately around the school.
Have a couple of observations on soil stability, moving down the memo. The first is, I, I think it's a little disingenuous to just refer to the soil stability issues, whether or not the hillside is currently moving. When you're gonna be carving away the hillside, and more importantly, you're gonna be pile-driving into it to hold up the retaining wall. And to do that, you're gonna have to feed piles in between the existing vertical piles that hold up Tubman. And I, I'm quite sure you don't know where those are because we don't know where those are. That's going to be, uh, a very neat trick if you can pull it off. And we have no idea what the consequences are gonna be for the structural integrity of the building if you hit one of them, or if you hit multiple ones. We are very concerned about that. Also, on, oh, uh, right, this, on the same issue. Again, I think it's disingenuous to talk about noise increases less than sound levels detectable by the human ear when you're gonna be driving piles. And I would assume that those are going to be screw-driven, not, uh, hammer-driven, but those still produce vibration. Yeah, it's not detectable by the human ear, but it is certainly detectable by the human experience. And we know that it is very destructive to the learning environment to be having that going on. And I would just refer to the district's experience with our kindergarten at Ramona. So, again, we have serious, serious concerns with that.
Had a question for Mr. Pierce. So, um, could you share sort of what P-BOT's approach and Commissioner Udaley's approach is to the, the project? And, um, sort of how we might engage with our municipal government?
Sure. So we've been a partner, really, for many years through the planning processes. The North Northeast Quadrant Plan was a, an attempt at finding a compromise proposal, really, around both what the city's needs would be and ODOT's needs would be. So, um, you know, we're really keeping an eye on the facility plan that was adopted by City Council and adopted by the Oregon Transportation Commission as the, the sort of guiding document of the components of the project that we agreed between the two bodies. And so, um, we're reinforcing that pretty continually, that that's the expectation that we're wanting to see from the project. We do have, I have two staff that are involved on the project team, as well as technical staff that are supporting the project through technical evaluation. So that's really the sort of direct way that we are participating. As I understand it, as ODOT's preparing to head into the design phase, they're planning to have participation by the Commissioner and by community groups into this next phase of the work. I know they're having a meeting tomorrow to discuss this more. But, so I think, you know, we're really looking to try to embed our municipal leadership and regional leadership into the project and through the next phase to help make sure that we are pressing for the best possible project. In, in terms of the sort of direct leadership, Commissioner Udaley, our Commissioner is the Commissioner in charge of our Bureau, so we're really looking for her support and leadership through the process.
And the piece about the concern about the diesel pollution, is that, um?
I happened to hear today her talking about this, so I, I, you know, felt like I could say it with enough confidence. I don't know exactly how it fits in our legislative strategy, so that would be the follow-up work that I could do to-
That'd be great to know as well.
Yeah, sure.
I just, I'm not sure if I got the process right, so I just wanted to check in on this. So you've completed the environmental assessment, and you have a finding of no significant impact, so you wouldn't go to environmental impact statement?
So, we, we're, we have the, we've published the environmental assessments, and there's not yet a NEPA decision document, so that would be the next phase. So, um, based on the technical analysis done in the environmental assessment and the public comment received, Federal Highway Administration then takes that, um, that information to make their NEPA decision document. And if the determination is that there are no significant impacts, then you would do a finding of no significant impact. If there's a determination that there are significant impacts, then you would go through an environmental impact statement process. So, we can't presume the outcome of the NEPA process at this point, but based on the information that's currently in the environmental assessment, there are no significant impacts that cannot be mitigated to a less-than-significant level.
So the public comment period could influence the NEPA decision? Like, if we already feel like there's more information needed, we can advocate for that to go to the EIS, the environmental impact.
Yeah, now is, now is really the time to focus in on comments very, specific to the environmental assessment, and as I said, those will be considered by our federal partners in determining what the next step will be.
So I just had one more question. So what's the substantive difference in the environmental information you would collect in the EIS versus the, the environmental impact statement versus the environmental assessment? So like, how much more? And what kind of data would you be collecting if you went to environmental impact statement?
So, at, at a baseline, we would be looking at the same technical resource areas that we evaluated in the environmental assessment. We would also be doing the same level of technical analysis for each of those resource areas that we have done for the environmental assessment. So, the difference between the documents that we prepared for the, for the EA and what will, if this were in EIS, what we would have prepared for in EIS are really one and the same.
So there's no substantial difference in your opinion?
Not in my opinion, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that answer surprises me. Because if there's no substantial difference, then, then why have two separate processes?
It really, so there's, there's three different approaches that you can take with the NEPA process. The first is-
I'm sorry, so can you explain again what NEPA is?
Sure, so NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act, and it is the, the federal act that requires when there is federal funding or a federal action or approval, federal approval needed on a project, that you go through the federal process with NEPA. And so there's three different approaches that you can take. And the first is categorical exclusion, and that is, or CE, as you'll hear it referred to. And that is when you know that your project, you can definitively say that you do not have significant impacts with the project. The, the, an environmental impact statement would be sort of the third tier, and that's when you would definitively say, we know we have significant impacts, and even with mitigation, we won't be able to mitigate those significant impacts or reduce those impacts to a less-than-significant level. And you'd move towards a NEPA decision document, in that case it's called a Record of Decision or a ROD, where you document your findings and the project, the significant impacts that you have, and then make the decision on whether you're willing to accept those significant impacts in light of the project. The middle ground is an environmental assessment, or an EA. And you do an environmental assessment when you are not, when you can't definitively say, no, we don't have significant impacts, or yes, we know we have significant impacts that we can't mitigate. And so you do that evaluation to help bring, really, the, the technical expertise to that process. And so we've done the environmental assessment process, the middle process, to objectively look at what are the impacts and benefits of the project to help determine whether, whether they are significant or not. Does that help kind of answer process?
Yeah.
Except then, the EIS on top of that would require you to do what differently?
So the EA, the environmental impact statement process, you do a draft environmental impact statement that would be a summary of the technical reports that you prepare for the project. So the technical reports that we have prepared as part of the EA would be the same technical reports that you would prepare for an EIS. The draft EIS then goes out for a 45-day public comment period, and then public comment is accepted, and then a final environmental impact statement is published based on the information in the environmental impact statement and public comment. Then the federal, the federal agency would move towards their NEPA decision document, which for an EIS would be your Record of Decision, and which would define sort of all of the findings from the environmental impact statement and making a determination if there are significant impacts, if they're willing to accept those, and continuing to move forward with the project.
Okay, uh, more questions? We've talked about air qualities, some about soil stability, the sound wall and noise, construction impacts. Were, construction impacts considered at all in the EA?
Yeah, they, they were, so the short-term construction impacts for each of the resource areas are defined both in the environmental assessment document themselves and each of the technical reports.
And was the, any potential impact on Harriet Tubman? The, the structural integrity? Or the, the sort-
Sound vibration.
I mean, how, how much did you look at the potential impacts on Harriet Tubman? Ritt large, like, all of it? Wa- was it specifically addressed in a technical report? Because our staff seems to think it was not.
So the, the technical reports each have a differing, it's called an area of potential impact, and so depending on the resource area sort of depends on how gross project level you're looking versus how detailed property by property you're looking. And so, on the whole, yes, we did, we, we knew, we were making the assumption that Harriet Tubman was opening as we were doing the environmental assessment, technical evaluation. And so for issues such as air quality, noise, right-of-way, property impacts, we did look at those specific to the Tubman site.
But you, you did not, what I think I heard was you did not look specifically at any impact on the structural integrity of the facility during construction?
So the environmental assessment is done really strategically, really early in the design phase, and so there's a lot of information that we still need to work out during the design phase as we have a design team onboard, as we have a contractor onboard. And so a lot of those specific decisions around how you construct a retaining wall, how you construct the sound wall, happen after the environmental review phase. And so we look at it for more of a, a footprint and high-level evaluation of the construction impacts.
Which makes sense from your perspective, not so much from ours. You, you know, we have a responsibility to preserve district property and to protect the health and safety of students and staff. And I will admit, I have not read all of your technical reports, because even if I did, I probably wouldn't understand them. But our staff have, and they have identified a pretty significant number of concerns that they believe have not been addressed in your assessment. So.
And time was certainly an issue as well.
Yes. You know, it, 45 days is not a lot of time. So. I mean, for my money, I'm gonna earn the side of caution. And, and I'm gonna ask for a full-on environmental impact statement so that we can have, we can have more assurances that this is not gonna- that this is not gonna jeopardize either the health or safety of people or the integrity of the property.
Or disrupt the educational process.
Right. So, okay, so you, you, this project is gonna be, what'd you say, four or five years total?
The construction period for the, for the full project is assumed to be about four to five years. But we will be preparing a construction phasing plan in, with our contractor to look at how we can sort of focus on key areas within the project area for construction, one piece at a time.
Okay, so this, so you, you mentioned that you would try to focus it on summer. So two and a half months is the summer vacation. I don't know much about construction, but I'm pretty sure you can't do a project of this magnitude, even in that small area in two and a half months. So there's gonna be some overlap with the school year.
We are, we're, yeah, we're committed to continuing to work as we get to that phase, continuing to work with you and your staff as we have more detail about the design and construction through that.
So I had another clarifying question, did you, about the environmental impact statement. So will the environmental impact statement, I'm thinking it won't, but will it look at construction impacts to the building? Or it's, it sounded like that would be a separate study that you would do once you have the design.
So the environmental impact statement would look at the same level as the environmental assessment did in terms of construction impacts, really based on this five percent design that we have. A lot of the input into the, the construction specifics in terms of timing, type of walls, geotechnical evaluation, that, that standard to happen after the environmental process. And, you know, ODOT, and I'm sure I can speak for the, the city on this too, but are, you know, committed, of course, to preserving the health and safety of our public Tubman students specifically. And so you have, you have our commitment that we will continue to work with your staff, with your board on this project to make sure that we're minimizing impacts to, to the school. ODOT is well-versed and has built many retaining walls on a number of facilities adjacent to existing properties. And so our, our design team and working with our future construction team would have, we of course are committed to working with you through those issues.
So, so is it possible that you have construction issues that you couldn't mitigate? I understand what you're saying, you're saying that you've done this before. You have a five percent design for construction now and that's what you've based potential impacts on in the EA. What happens if you find out that there are significant impacts to the structural integrity of the building at sixty percent design?
Yeah, so we've taken a conservative assumption right now in terms of what's assumed for the construction phase and impacts in the evaluation. There's always going to be things that we don't know about that do come up in project design and construction. And so, you know, as those come up, we, we do work through those looking back at our environmental process and seeing where we need, where we might need to go back and, and look at that work.
For example, geotechnical information that would come forward at that time and the impact that would have on adjacent buildings.
The projects that I've been involved in, from PBOD, you know, we, we do install monitors to the adjacent structures. So you're able to, to confirm that you are not producing settlement. You know, that's, that's part of the, part of the process. And certainly as you're designing the retaining wall, you're, you know, providing shoring to the adjacent parcels so they don't slide like, you know, into the, into the roadway. So it's, it's, not that it is not a significant issue for this specific building, but it is pretty standard set of issues to be dealt with. If you look at the retaining walls that were just built all along eighty-four, there's a lot of those kind of issues related to a whole bunch of different types of structures and hillsides that ODOT is, was just dealing with.
How many of those had substandard fill underneath them?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
And how many of them were within thirty feet of a school?
Probably none of those.
Probably none.
Okay, any more questions?
A question on traffic. Now, I did hear you say that the removal of the Flint Street overpass would not impede access to Tubman. But of course, we don't use the Flint overpass for access to Tubman. We use it for egress from Tubman. That's how the school buses get out. So in your modeling of turning Flint into a, a dogleg onto Tillamook, did you model getting a school bus to make a left-hand turn onto Tillamook and then off of Tillamook either a left onto Williams or a right onto Vancouver? Because that's what they would have to do and Tillamook is a very narrow street. Our previous chief operating officer said it couldn't be done, is why I asked the question.
So I, in terms of evaluation for the traffic, we did, we, our traffic model does include obviously the, the closure of Flint as we look to the project. With this being early in design, there's still a lot of work to be done on the sort of the, the specific road design, the turning radii. And so as we know, as we continue to move through design, it'll be important to have conversations with the school district and looking specifically at how, how the, how the school bus routes would be affected and what we would need to accommodate as part of that design.
I think that's very important for you to comment on. Actually, as a daily rider on Tillamook, I have an issue with the school buses using Tillamook to access MLK. So I, I think a deeper look at the school buses and the route that they're taking is a very important part of, of this upcoming design process. I see them every day, so I, I know they're, they're currently using Tillamook very actively as well.
We, I just got the time signal. So thank you so much for coming and presenting and, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you for your time.
I have some questions about our process and deliberation.
Just a question, are we gonna have the opportunity to also hear from, so the PPS environmental staff on this at some point? Not, not tonight, but just at, at some point, I'd be interested in. This, this was a great framework.
From our staff? Well, I, I think this is the reflection of our staff's input on this.
Which goes back to my question which I posed by email. Who wrote this memo?
Our staff. Oh, I think Dan Young had the lead on it, but Claire's gonna come tell us.
Sorry, it's just a memo from no one.
So I, I believe there is, you had, we do have staff in, including Dan, and then we also had some board members involved in the, in the draft. So there are multiple people in, involved in the draft of the memo.
So who, who, how, how do we know who's, I mean, I, to Julia's point about it would be nice to hear from someone. I don't know anything about the, the credibility or the research of this information put forward that says to ODOT from no one.
So if I could add, we were asked to pull together a staff team after ODOT presented to our team under Dan, I don't wanna speak for Dan, and Claire, and with a lot of concerns about the process, the project, excuse me, and that the comment period is closing April first. So the memo you see before you is a summary of what staff has heard and the concerns we've developed about the project, which culminates in a proposed position the board could take to propose that the, the project go through the EIS, the environmental impact statement route, and not go for the no findings and proceed ahead, just because there were a lot of questions raised. So that's an internal document we created at the request of a couple of board members. So you had something to think about in case the board wanted to weigh in in time for the April one deadline?
So the companion resolution that we have with this memo, and that makes sense, what you just said, actually directs the superintendent to submit this memo. And since the lineage back to staff expert assessment is pretty unclear to me, it seems to me what we're actually trying to do here is arrive at a board position and that the board, we're, you're asking, we're asking the board to submit this memo and to call for a full environmental impact statement, not the superintendent.
Director Konstant, yes, you are correct, and that was an oversight. We, we pulled these materials together quickly for you, but we would recommend the board take the action and actually submit the formal comment.
So when we're ready for, to consider this resolution, I'll make a modest amendment.
So what, what amendment will that be?
The board agrees to submit the memo. I mean agreeing that we believe the memo as currently written is sufficient and is what we want to express to call for a full EIS. I would just remove directs the superintendent and insert agrees.
The board agrees the superintendent will submit?
Agrees to submit.
But it's still gonna be a memo from PPS?
Right, from, from the, from us.
From the board.
From the board.
It would need a preamble based on, you know-
That just seems strange because, okay, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not an expert. I mean, Director Rosen has experience, but it seems like we could take a position, but it's based on-
Which is why it was-
There are unanswered questions and we would like to have a further evaluation done. And so it's, it's not that we have specific answers right now, but we have enough questions that we need to go the next, request the next level.
And I think that's fairly captured in this. I mean, this, this memo is not an assessment or analysis even of the existing conditions and doubting ODOT's assessments. It's simply saying, these are the questions that we have. These are the areas where we feel that potentially the impacts to our schools wasn't, were not adequately considered. And so let's direct, let's go on the record saying we wanna see deeper investigation as it pertains to Tubman.
But it's, it's not gonna be a memo from the school board. I mean, we didn't, we didn't write this nor do we have the expertise and I don't think we have the credibility. There may have been board members involved, which I think is fine, but it needs to be a PPS document. I mean, it wasn't presented-
So it came to us with no, that was my point originally. It came to us with no signature as to who created it or who vetted it. And so, I mean, maybe we just scrap this thorough memo and we say, based on information brought forward by staff and, you know, questions, we would like to see further analysis from ODOT on the impact specifically to Tubman School.
I, I think the, actually, the memo is well-written. But it's just like, I'm not prepared to say like I, I am qualified to be the, it came from us just based on this. I mean, I'm assuming it's a PPS, you know, it's from Portland Public Schools and the board can submit it, but it- It seems weird to have it come from the-
There was a group of us staff that were in, present at the meeting with ODOT and did, questions were raised throughout the meeting. And so I, I do think it's unusual for us to have a resolution from, from a board standpoint directing staff to sign something. I think that, so we need some work on that. But certainly there could be a memo to the board, not, you know, from staff. This is what was raised in the staff meeting. And from that point, then the board could ask for the next step with ODOT.
And so our window is until April first, yeah?
I think, I think the purpose, the purpose of the memo is to submit technical comments to the public process. So it seems appropriate that the technical staff have written a memo that we wanna submit as soon as possible to have these, as part of the record, we want these questions answered. I'm not even convinced going to the EIS is what we want at this point. We want these questions answered to our satisfaction to prove whether there is a significant impact. So I guess I'm, it's, I guess I'm, I'm thinking what Julia's thinking. We should have the, we should have a memo from the tech. I don't know how, what the board's role is at this point, whether we need a resolution or not, but it seems like the technical staff, PPS has decided there are significant issues that need to be explored and we wanna submit that as part of the public comment record. So how do we just get to that?
So Madam Chair, I'm gonna suggest that pursuant to Director Rosen's comments, that we just take the two and the from off and the subject and just have a date and title it, comments submitted by PPS on I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Project Environmental Assessment. And then it's a submission from the district. And it can be, the resolution can be that the, the board agrees or the formulation that Director Konstant has, but I think we, we have a substance here. It's just the formatting issue. So I, I move that change in the underlying document.
Are you comfortable with that? Again, these were, these were created as a draft for you all to consider tonight, being that it's your last meeting before April first. So we're happy to take whatever format you decide on forward.
I, I would just like to mention briefly, I have been following this issue literally for two decades now. And I deeply appreciate, and I think the community should appreciate, the extent to which you have heard their very longstanding concerns around this. Thank you. It's really important.
Okay, so, so we haven't- Let's move the resolution and then we can amend, amend it.
Are we gonna move the amendment first? Yeah, or does this qualify as a friendly amendment to delete?
We, we haven't put the resolution into discussion yet, so let's, let's do that. Okay.
I meant that we adopt resolution five eight five six, PPS comments on the environmental assessment of the I-5 Broadway Widler Facility Plan.
Okay, Director Konstant moves and Director Anthony seconds adoption of resolution number five eight five six. Okay, discussion. Okay, so I, I think we've discussed that we wanna amend, so can somebody-
With Deputy Counsel Kane's blessing, I think that this will constitute a friendly amendment to delete the three words direct the superintendent and replace with agrees.
Okay.
I second that amendment.
Uh, well, hang on, so can I just ask for clarification? So do we still wanna, I, I mean, this is underlined and it looks like a document, the name, the title of a document. The board agrees that, that PPS-
To submit comments?
Yeah.
To submit comments. To ODOT and just leave out the title, right? Yeah, just, okay. During the public comment period. So, so number three would now read, the board agrees to submit comments to ODOT during the EA public comment period. Period?
Yeah.
This is the form of the comments that we're going to submit?
Okay, can I make a friendly amendment to the friendly amendment? How about we ditch number three altogether and change number two to say, therefore, the board requests that PPS submit comments- the Board requests that PPS submit comments supporting a full," something like that? A full environmental impact statement.
Because they're basically, what I understand... And them saying is they've generated all the environmental information they're gonna generate regardless, so these are the questions we have now based on the information.
Which frankly, still makes no sense to me, but...
Well, what, what it would do is give us more time. Should they, should we submit these and they not respond to them, and go ahead and issue a finding of no significant impact?
Well, it becomes part of their record regardless.
I think they do have to respond.
They, they do have to respond, and it becomes part of their record.
Well, I mean, I think...
No, no, I, I agree, but the, the response could be much less than satisfactory. I mean, they responded to questions about air quality by saying, "Well, we, we did some air quality monitoring, and we, we know from experience that needs to be on the site." Well, the other thing I would suggest is that obviously we would copy the Commissioner, Commissioner Udaley, and we could work through the city to get these questions answered. I mean, that's a separate, with parallel track, I think we would wanna take.
A parallel, yeah, but I, but this is, as I understand it, ODOT's driving this bus.
This is ODOT, yeah, that's not her purview.
You know? ODOT's driving this bus. Am I wrong?
Yes, you are not wrong.
Well, I'm, all right, I'm just suggesting that the city can have a significant influence over this, especially considering that it's the board's, the district's concern.
Right. Okay, so, um, okay, so I just wanna clarify, so the amendment on the table is just to, to leave one and two as is, change three to, "The Board Agrees to Submit Comments to ODOT During the EA Public Comment Period." Okay. It's already been moved and seconded, so...
Chair, that would imply then that this draft document would be simply titled, "Comments from Portland Public Schools."
Yes, yes, yeah. Okay. Okay, we ready to vote? So, we're voting on the amendment to the resolution. So, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no? Any abstentions? Student Representative Pasler?
Aye.
Okay, so, the board votes to amend the resolution as stated. Do you have the language?
I do.
Okay. Okay, so now we vote on the underlying resolution.
I have an amendment. Would like to propose, on the second page of the resolution, item G, end of the third line in the paragraph, where it says, "Increased Noise Pollution," comma. In there, I would like inserted, "Lack of School Bus Egress From Harriet Tubman Middle School With the Removal of the Flint Street Overpass," comma.
So, you're adding just an additional risk?
An additional risk.
Okay, so you're moving that amendment?
I'm moving that amendment.
Second.
Okay, Director Anthony moves, Director Bailey seconds the amendment, any discussion?
Can you re, sorry, restate it one more time?
Sure. Lack of school bus egress from Harriet Tubman Middle School With the Removal of the Flint Street Overpass. Comma.
So, your point is that you don't believe that there is an alternative for routing buses at Harriet Tubman?
Yeah, I was given that on very good authority.
The phrase is actually, raise substantial questions about, so we have a substantial question about that.
Just a question for staff, do you have an opinion on adding that to that section? Or do you share the concern?
I haven't checked, I, I haven't checked that out, I didn't know that it was gonna be on the, on the, as a question tonight, so I'm unaware.
It is something that was brought up before, I think it even came up during our meeting with ODOT, if I recall, a few weeks ago, so I'm, I'm comfortable adding that, 'cause it is a question, will that work?
Thanks.
Good, thank you.
Okay, let's vote on that amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Student Representative Pasler?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment is passed by a vote of seven to zero, with the student representative voting yes.
Do we wanna add a word about vibrations?
Not really.
I mean, no, that is part of their assessment.
I mean, we've got noise pollution, but not vibrations in particular.
Well, it's, it's in the, it's in the comments, I believe. Isn't it, isn't it? I think it's in the comments.
I can't recall specifically, I mean, there is broad language about concerns about the stability, soil stability and structure, so I think globally, I would say it's covered, but I can't say that's specifically called out.
In the comments, third page, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, or third one from the bottom, it's the last sentence.
There we go, okay. Okay, we ready to vote?
Chair Moore?
Yes?
We have one person signed up for public comment.
Oh, okay.
Erin Brown?
I'll rejoin by phone for the budget discussion.
Good evening, my name is Erin Brown, I live in the St. John's neighborhood of North Portland, and I'm an avid booster and supporter of Portland Public Schools, having worked with many of you on the Safe and Healthy Schools Campaign. Here to testify in support of your resolution today, give a statement encouraging PPS to demonstrate leadership and ask for an environmental impact statement to evaluate the $500 million freeway expansion that ODOT is proposing in the backyard of Harriet Tubman Middle School. Our campaign started in August of 2017, we've collected thousands of community signatures and community groups. There isn't, I'm gonna just give a little bit of context as to our campaign to stop this freeway, just to, you know, give you extra information aside from the impacts to Tubman. There isn't a single freeway expansion anywhere in North America that has ever solved traffic congestion. Chair Moore was absolutely correct. Traffic's undeniably miserable, I live in St. John's, I'm driving through the Rose Quarter frequently, this, spending a half a billion dollars on a freeway expansion has never made traffic better. There's this concept called induced demand, you build more lanes of traffic, more people drive. Air pollution, the census tract that Tubman is in has the seventh highest rate, risk of cancer of any census tract in the state of Oregon. The air pollution in the area, asthma, heart diseases, lung diseases, diabetes, poor student performance, on and on and on. I think everyone in this room knows how terrible the particulates from automobiles and particularly trucks, this freeway expansion is literally moving it into the backyard of Tubman. The lanes are getting wider, and they're moving even closer to the school. That has enormous environmental justice implications, and forty percent of Tubman's students are African-American, the district identifies seventy-three point five percent of students is underserved. I just want you to know that the Harriet Tubman PTSA is about to put out a statement in opposition to this project as well, so you are really standing with the frontline communities at Tubman. This project does an enormous disservice to the North Northeast Portland families who are putting in the elbow grease to build a thriving, integrated, restored community at Harriet Tubman Middle School. While the community's capacity to challenge this freeway expansion is comparatively low, given all the numerous other challenges that they face that I'm sure you're all aware of, the PTSA is expected to come out and has indicated a willingness to steadfastly oppose this project. I only have a couple minutes, so I can't go through everything. There hasn't been a single traffic fatality on that stretch of freeway in over a decade. Meanwhile, a tenth grader at Madison High School was hit and nearly killed crossing Eighty Second Avenue, that's a street ODOT owns. ODOT could be spending the money on traffic safety in our communities, they're instead putting half a billion dollars into a freeway expansion. We also didn't hear anything about climate, we have eleven years to solve climate change, forty percent of Oregon's carbon emissions come from transportation, this is fossil fuel infrastructure. I don't know how many PPS students took Friday off last week to go on a climate strike, but in 2030, a Tubman Middle School student should be graduating college, and he, he or she should be moving forward into the workforce, ready to survive and thrive, and not have to deal with climate dystopia. We have eleven years to solve climate change. PPS is uniquely positioned to help challenge these fossil fuel infrastructures and adequately stand up for the next generation of Oregonians that are counting on you. We are desperately counting on you. I'm a bit younger than all of you, except Nick, he's much younger than I am, he's counting on you. I should just note, really, my last comments, ODOT was talking extensively about the community engagement they were doing, I just wanna list organizations that are in opposition to this project, the Audubon Society, Oregon Walks, Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility, Community Cycling Center, Opal Environmental Justice Organ, the Harriet Tubman PTSA, the Irvington Community Association, the Elliott Student, the Elliott Neighbor Association, Three Fifty PDX, DPave, the Street Trust, Neighbors for Clean Air, the City's Bicycle Advisory Committee, and where I would be if this meeting didn't went late, the Pedestrian Advisory Committee. All of those groups, and many others, are actively looking through all of the data and are finding numerous problems with this, right? I, I just, I know I'm out of time, it's all right, I can just finish my comments. If someone tells me, if my mic goes off, I'll leave. There was the question about data that I just wanted to provide that, that detail towards. So, the environmental assessment document that was released on February fifteenth, it had Appendix A that had like the traffic study. Appendixes B, C, D, E, F, and G, and numerous other documents were just blank. The document was listed as a draft of January 2015. We sent in a letter asking ODOT for that additional data, we didn't get it till March thirteenth. They gave us six hundred and thirty pages of quantitative technical information that like, you know, all of the claims that you heard today about how this project is going to improve air quality, improve traffic congestion, and deal with climate change, freeways don't do those things, right? Like, that doesn't check out that widening a freeway in the backyard of Tubman is going to improve the air quality there? And all of those findings are based on data that ODOT, first of all, didn't originally release, second of all, we just got it, and B, we only have nineteen days and thirteen business days to look through those numbers for a $500 million piece of fossil fuel infrastructure in the backyard of Harriet Tubman Middle School? Is this like Mad Libs? Like, bad idea, bad idea, bad idea, bad idea? Like, Portland Public Schools is uniquely, I, I will wrap up, I know that you're worried about time, you have the authority to ask ODOT for an extension. In fact, they should be giving a forty-five day public comment period, they didn't give us the original data till March thirteenth. If you're, if PPS were to put out an additional statement saying, "We believe we need until April twenty-sixth," which would be a forty-five day public comment period from when the March thirteenth, the actual data on which all of their findings are based on, that we didn't have access to, that would be enormously helpful for the community. I wanna thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we are not gonna amend the resolution to that effect, just saying, we need to vote on it. Okay.
Why not?
Okay, we could, does anybody wanna do another amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I will entertain the motion.
I would...
We're gonna be submitting comments, you know?
I know, but this is specifically asking them to increase the comment period.
Okay, I, I mean, we're not gonna be sending this, we're gonna be sending comments, and we could amend the comments to that effect.
Okay, while we haven't talked about who's gonna do the comments, and since they need to be in relatively soon, how we're gonna do that as a board.
Described, Director Bailey, is that we're just gonna get rid of the "to," "from," and the word "subject," and just make a header that says, "Comments Submitted by Portland Public Schools or Board of Education on I-5 Rose Quarter Improvement Projects Environmental Assessment." And we could, we could just authorize the addition of a paragraph about the, like, the time.
Okay.
So, we don't need a resolution to that effect.
I can live with that, okay.
Any objections to that?
We, we have a sense of the board that we're...
Yeah, we're good. Okay, we're good. Okay, can we vote? Okay.
So, I just wanna say, my comments so far have been fairly bloodless. What Mr. Brown said, I mean, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are now going to vote on Resolution number 5856. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, no? Any abstentions? Student Representative Pasler?
Aye.
Resolution number 5856 passes by a vote of seven to zero, Student Representative Pasler voting aye. Oops, six, zero, sorry. Okay, I'm intuiting Amy's vote, but, okay. Okay. All right, I just wanna note, we are way over time, so, okay, next item is second reading, field trips, foreign travel, and other off-campus activities. I'm gonna ask Director Bryn Edwards to shepherd this. Thank you, Chair Moore.
So, this is the policy previously known as off-campus activities, it's now the field trips, foreign travel, and other off-campus activities. The recommendation from the Policy and Governance Committee is for final approval this evening, just as back, I'm gonna provide some background because it's had a sort of windy, windy path here. So, work on this policy began last year following the independent Whitehurst investigation, the investigation report made a series of recommendations, and two of them related to policy, and so this is one of the two policy recommendations. This policy should result in improved safety of students and guidance, and improved guidance to schools, increase equitable access to off-campus activities, and incorporates recommendations from the Whitehurst report. The new policy does the following, there is first, well, some of, some of the language is retained from the previous policy, but there's a statement of value of experiences for our students outside the classroom, whether that, those are field trips for the day, or, or extended travel, both in the US and abroad. The policy also sets expectations of conduct and behavior on the part of all participants. The policy now divides travel into sort of two big areas, district-sponsored activities, and then non-school-sponsored activities. And on each of these different types of activities or travel, they provide guidance to schools on, both for, for staff, students, and families. In addition, the policy has added to it a, a statement about, I think a value statement of the district, related to equity, and also sort of some expectations, and I wanna just read it, 'cause this is new language. "In planning for off-campus activities, staff members must avoid factors that might prohibit student participation, including financial burden, as well as hazards or barriers for students arising from discriminatory policies or practices in the destination or during transit based on religion, culture, gender orientation, sexual identity, or immigration status. Trips should be designed to promote healthy, safe, and inclusive experiences for all students, and consider the identified special needs and required accommodations of students with an individual education plan, known as an IEP, and/or plans under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973." So, that's, that's an addition. We had a first reading on the policy after some significant committee work, and then it went out into the public comment period, we received a significant amount of feedback, and I wanna thank the community members, families, parents, staff, who took the time to read the policy, and based on their experiences, provided some suggestions for, for changes in the policy. So, based on that public comment that came from both students and families, and working with the superintendent, we made a number of modifications to the policy, including the following. One, there was a reference to eliminations of some administrative directives, and that really wasn't necessary in the overall, to have that in the overall staff report, because administrative directives is not a board action, it's the superintendent's and staff's. In the resolution, we also, in the resolution that we had before us, we also at the time decided that we wanted to add a, again, this is based on community feedback, a, therefore resolved, "The Board Further Instructs the Superintendent to Convene a Working Group to Explore Creation of a District-Wide Experiential Learning Component of the Middle Grades Curriculum and to Report Back to the Board No Later Than October 31st, 2019," and recommendations coming out of that working group. And again, one of the concerns that had been raised was that the access to a middle grades... the concerns that had been raised was that the access to a middle grades experiential learning, that's something that we value, and that not all students had the opportunity to experience that. So, this is an opportunity to provide that to, hopefully to all of our students. So, that was another change. We also eliminated, there was a five-day limitation on the length of the trips. That was eliminated from the draft. And then, we, when we, when we took that out, one of the concerns of why it had been added was there was a concern that extended trips were having impacts, were having positive impacts on the students who traveled, but that there were disproportionate impacts in some cases in the school where students, the students who weren't on the trip remained in the school. So, we also added language to, to address that because I think there was the full expectation that there's going to be continuity of learning, even if a group of students, or even a larger group of students, have left the school. So, we added language that said, "District staff responsible for overseeing extended travel must notify building administrators in advance of the trip so that plans for continuity of curriculum and instruction can be assured for students remaining on campus. Those plans must be communicated to the school community and observed so that no disruption in curriculum or programming will occur for students remaining on campus." So, this was a way to provide support for students who may not be traveling. And so, we made all of those adjustments to the policy. We indicated we are going to add language in the resolution around the working group on the eighth grade experience, and then we had another, we had another first reading. And I think yesterday was the end of the 21-day comment period. During that comment period, we received additional comment. And the other day, the Policy and Governance Committee had a meeting where we discussed the comments that we received. So, I'm just going to briefly discuss that. We made one very small change, but I also would just want to acknowledge that we did review all the public comments we received and discussed them, and some of them, we felt there were different ways to address them. The first batch of comments that we had would fall into the bucket of people thanking us for making some modifications and supporting the changes that were in sort of the second version of the document. There were a few comments that were submitted that indicated that they felt the, it would be very hard for the district to provide equitable experiences, and so, more in favor of having less travel because of the potential for inequities. So, I think we talked about that, and we've, it's been a concern, it was a concern of the committee, and we feel like this, there are some things that we've built into the, the policy that should address that. And then, third, there was a request that the board not have to approve some of these trips that happen every year. And we considered that. That actually was, in current policy, it wasn't a new requirement. So, even, but the comment came in that the board should consider not approving that. And we, if you look at our, our business agendas, even tonight, we have a number of field trips we're approving, and we discussed that. And while some of the trips may seem rather routine and should be sort of on an auto approval, that, the, the discussion that we had in the committee is that, especially with overseas travel, events change, geopolitical risk, laws change, policy changes, State Department advisories change, and that we really couldn't get into a pattern of sort of preapproval, that every, every trip should go through a, a, a risk assessment, and sort of the criteria of, do they have the right on a chaperones, what sort of travel arrangements are being made, all the things that I think as, as, as parents, when you're, students traveling, that you expect sort of the district to have a checklist and make sure that students are safe, and there's some basic requirements met. We did make one small change based on that comment that on, we struck one word in Section 1.5. We had a statement that said, "In planning for off-campus activities, staff members must avoid factors that might prohibit student participation, including financial burden, as well as any," and it said, "any potential hazards." And we dropped, we were striking the words "potential" because it just seemed to create a very, very broad category. So, really trying to narrow it down. The other discussion that we had is that there seemed to be a sense of, from the comments that we received, that a concern that there may be sort of arbitrary decisions made by, by the board or staff potentially in, you know, recommending approval, or the board actually approving some of these trips. And the risk management side of the, PPS is going to put together sort of an outline of what criteria they currently use so that it's transparent of kind of the thing, the things that the district looks at when they are making a recommendation to the board. And I'll think, I'll say during my five years that I've been on the board, I don't think I've ever been on a board where there was a, the board disapproved of a recommended trip. I think there's a lot more happens before it even gets to the board. So, we talked about really trying to be much more transparent so that people will feel comfortable as their, their students are getting ready for things, and they're raising money that that, they will know what, what the criteria is. And so, those were the comments we received. And so, there's, there's one deletion, and the current draft we have before us has that deletion already made. So, with that, I'm going to thank the community for engaging with us and sharing with us the, the value that you see in travel and outside of the classroom experiences. I think it also, this is a, it was important for our fulfilling the work on the Whitehurst report and the recommendations that were made that we also modify the policy. So, with that, the, the policy coming out of the committee with the one small change was a recommendation that the board move for final adoption this evening. Okay, thank you. The board will now consider Resolution Number 5857, Amendment of Board of Education Policy 6.50.010P, Off-Campus Activities. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Director Anthony moves. Director Bryn Edwards seconds Resolution Number 5857. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
Yes, we have three. Erica Holder and Ann Pernick.
Erica and Luna are a duo, not Ann, and so, they're going together. They're going to take three minutes.
And then, the next speaker is Ann Pernick.
Konnichiwa, watashi no nama wa Seigawa Erika desu.
Watashi wa Shimakage Luna desu.
Hi, my name is Erica.
And I'm Luna. And we're from Mount Tabor Middle School, and we're eighth graders that are in the Japanese immersion program.
In April, we will be participating in the Japanese Research Residency, along with 82 of our fellow classmates. Not only is this an important part of our educational journey in the Japanese immersion program, it is also an opportunity to experience the Japanese culture firsthand. Although we have spent years speaking the language and learning about the many cultural aspects of Japan, there's only so much you can do in a classroom. We have been preparing and working towards this trip for nine years. It has motivated me to do my, through my work and the work of my classmates. One of the biggest parts of this trip is a cross-cultural inquiry project, which is where we select a topic pertaining to the cultural differences of America and Japan. While we do a lot of research beforehand, a majority of it is based around the research conducted in Japan. My sister was part of the 2016 Japanese Research Residency, and her topic was comparing the education system in American Japan. While she was in Japan, she was not only able to conduct her surveys and interviews, but she was also able to experience the educational system herself as she shared with her host sister. She is excited that I will be going on the trip too, because going to Japan really helped broaden her knowledge of Japan and its culture.
It is important that the kids of my age get to have the opportunity to experience culture and lifestyle outside of what we have currently in the U.S. My father, who was in the military, has gone to travel to so many different, different places, and has had my brother and I attend the Japanese immersion program because he has always felt as though he missed out on the opportunity to learn a new culture and language. Some of the parents of my fellow students are Japanese and would like their children to learn the language they grew up speaking. This is why I feel that in this current age of diversity and inclusion, children of my age need to be immersed in different languages. Having this kind of program in public schools makes it more accessible, and that is really important. I know that what I have had to say is short and form, from the view of one individual, I could go on and on about the program and what it means to me and meant to those who preceded me, and those who will be impacted after I've moved on. I ask that you have, take what we, the future, are asking to heart, give us the tools to grow and experience different cultures firsthand through our own eyes, and be immersed in a world that is different from our day-to-day lives. Thank you for voting to adopt the proposed policy on foreign travel, and for taking the time to acknowledge the importance of the Japanese Research Residency, and working to make these kinds of opportunities available to all students, not just immersion students. Arigato.
Thank you.
And our last speaker will be Leitha Tawney, along with Ann Pernick.
Hi, my name is Ann Pernick, and I'm on the Board of Shirene of Portland. I'm representing the board tonight. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. And like the students before me, we want to recommend a yes vote on the draft of the policy. We do have some remaining concerns, and we look forward to talking with you about those going forward. It sounds like there's already been some effort related to laying out what will be necessary for that annual review, and that's really helpful. Look forward to talking about that more. And, and I think there are some remaining concerns still, some of which Leitha will go into after me. We are strongly in favor of an eighth-grade capstone program across the district, and we look forward to supporting that advisory group and to working with you all on that going forward to help create these new robust programs. And we want to thank the many stakeholders, the students, the parents, teachers, and others who brought their concerns and ideas to this discussion. Some of them are here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight, too. And we look forward to consistent and continuous communication with you all going forward on this with, with board and staff, and look forward to working to improve these programs for all of the schools in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm Leitha Tawney, T-A-W-N-E-Y. I'm the president of Ginren, the Parents' Support Group at MLK Junior and Harriet Tubman, supporting Mandarin immersion there. And I want to thank you for the commitment to expanding DLI to the underserved communities, making this opportunity, the opportunity that these trips and these research residencies present, really start at the kindergarten level. So, that commitment is, is really crucial, and I appreciate that. And I want to thank you for the changes so far that, that retain the opportunity for overseas travel for our, for our community as well. Two asks tonight. The first is, in our letter in February, providing public comment, we asked for some shifts in language around the hazards paragraph. Director Bryn Edwards described some changes that have already been made. I think it is difficult for us to imagine that you could create a trip that avoided all factors that might prohibit student participation. I would rather see staff directed to mitigate those factors as opposed to simply avoid them. Our students are from low-income households, and financial issues will be present. And the question is, what are we going to do about them? We can't just avoid them. We have to deal with them head-on. Similarly, that paragraph lists a range of potential hazards that students might encounter based on a range of issues. It ignores race, which is something that our parents have already raised. And I think, more fundamentally, I would ask that it directs staff to address or develop approaches to those potential hazards. Again, not simply avoid them. Our, our families face these issues in Portland, never mind in a cross-cultural setting. And finally, my final, so, there's some specific language changes that I would ask you to consider in that paragraph to try to make it resonate with our community's experience, lived experience, both in the city and outside the city. Finally, I would ask that you be very clear that we have a seat at the table as the administrative rules are created and the policy is implemented. It is very difficult for us to field the kind of advocacy team that our colleagues have been able to field, and I'm very grateful that our needs and their needs have aligned in this particular case. But it's been incredibly instructive at how sort of, how different the advocacy stance can be when you're not focused on, for example, a freeway being developed next to your school, and you can focus on academics. So, we would really ask to have a seat at that conversation, and we'd be happy to, to participate as fully as possible. But really, expanding these programs to underserved schools was an important first step, and we are committed partnering with PPS to see that through, and seeing these kids graduate fully bilingual and biliterate. Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now consider Resolution Number 5857, Amendment, oh, sorry, already did that. Is there any board discussion?
Yes, I would like to propose an amendment, given the comments Ms. Tawney made. For the paragraph on risk, paragraph five, I would suggest, "In planning for off-campus activities, staff members must mitigate factors that might prohibit student participation, including financial burden. Trip should be designed to promote healthy, safe, and inclusive experiences for all students. Staff members should develop approaches to the potential hazards that students may encounter from discriminatory policies or practices in the destination or during transit based on race, comma, religion," and then through to the end.
So, I'm not, was that all, I, one amendment, or are you just adding a couple of words? I'm just trying to understand here.
Oh, I am changing a couple of words through three sentences.
So, we did not discuss adding "race." Somehow, I must have missed that in the comments. My error. We did have a committee discussion about the words mitigate versus, versus avoid, and the committee made the decision to stay with the wording that we have, and that's why we also removed the word "potential." So, we did have a committee discussion and agreement, unanimous agreement of leaving the words "based on" the interim general counsel's advice to us. But we did, we did not discuss adding the word "race" because, again, when I went through the comments, I didn't notice that, and that was an oversight on my part.
So, I don't know, but, okay. I think we need a, I think we need a, I'm going to second it so that we can actually have a discussion of the amendment. Second, I want to maybe "address" rather than mitigate might be a better word. Mitigate means to maybe lessen. Address means directly address. And I think mixing the financial burden, which I think we need to like, avoid. We, we should never have students not go on a trip because of their finances. The, the hazard part of it, again, once you put in the word "practices," show me anywhere in this world where there aren't discriminatory practices of some sort or another. They're, they're everywhere. So, I don't, how can you avoid that? I think they need to be addressed, or some word like that.
Well, we, the discussion in the committee, and maybe its practices, maybe laws, there's, you know, countries where it's not a practice, it's, the discriminatory treatment is actually a national policy or a law. For example, there are some countries that would not be...
I, I understand the distinction. I, I understand the distinction between the two, but it says practices.
So do you want to just strike practices, because what we're, we're primarily getting at is um, not having our students go to places where. Um, there are laws or policies that are discriminatory based on. These. Classes.
Yeah, I'm. We might be surprised about some countries that have things on. Uh, on their books, so um. I could probably live with that, but I think there might be some interesting research uh, that we could assign some students to look into, for example. Um, you know.
I mean. I would suggest that um.
We've got some states then uh.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I would suggest that part of the job of anybody who's organizing one of these trips. Um, is to perform due diligence around this, you know, precisely this kind of thing. Um, so. I mean, I don't think we need to have a research study looking at the globe and, you know, it's, it's.
It'd be a great project though. Yes, okay.
It would take a very long time.
Point taken, well. Um.
I, I'd like to ask council a question, um, just.
Sure.
Was there a reason um, why we didn't have it in the um, the list, why we didn't have race as a, as a factor? Um, is there any objection to that?
None at all.
Um, so. I, I'm going to um, vote against the amendment. Um, because I think we had a discussion about this and we had a. Um. On advice of our council and risk management um, relating to this particular language. Um, I. If, if, depending on what happens with motion, I, I would support adding uh, the word race um, to that, given it was an admission and it was never previously discussed. But we did discuss the other issue in committee with. Four members of the board.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment?
So I'll, I'll probably vote no on the, I'll vote no on the amendment, but I think that I want to come back and pick up. Some, some pieces of it and have another go at it.
Okay. Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, no. Uh, any abstentions? Student Representative Pasler?
No.
Okay, the amendment fails by a vote of. Five to one, student um, representative voting no, okay.
Chair Moore, I'd like to move that we add the word race and I'm going to ask um. Deputy Counsel Kane for where she would suggest inserting it in the, the list.
Um, I think as was suggested by um. Mr. Anthony at, right after uh, the word on, so on race, comma, religion, comma, culture.
Okay, Director Bryn Edwards moves, Director Anthony seconds uh, the amendment to add the word race. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready to vote. Okay, all in favor of the addition, um, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student Representative Pasler?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment passes by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Pasler voting yes, okay. Anything else?
Just a comment. Um, I want to thank uh, the policy and governance's persistence on this particular policy, I think I said this before. It's a good example of how iterative uh, the process uh, will be as we look at um, the broad array of our policies. Um, I think there were some important uh, concerns and questions we had particularly related to student safety. Um, what was informative, uh, and, and I know we all appreciated was the input from our students, from the variety of programs. Um, and it helped to prompt some, some work that I think is well-aligned with what we want to see over time in our middle school redesign, so. Uh, I really welcome the opportunity for, for staff uh, to, to engage with community stakeholders as we talk about what experiential learning looks like. Across the whole span of grades, but certainly starting in the middle grades, uh, so I, I do appreciate that. Um, staff's going to be very careful about developing administrative directives to match here. Um, and hope that there's an uh, uh, an opportunity that makes sense for um, our community to look at that, to make sure it's aligned. Um, but I think as homework for, for staff certainly will be uh, refreshing the ADs. Um, as well as some pretty specific checklist at this point to make sure we have a detailed review process for, for trips. Uh, that are aligned with um, curricular goals. Uh, one of the key ones is to also make sure that the continuity of program uh, remains intact uh, for students. So uh, anytime uh, we take a detailed uh, look at our policies, we know that that will have an implication for. Uh, making sure our school leaders are well aware and we'll be sure to add that to um, our program of learning with them. Um, and so hopefully we'll make sure that that, that that takes place. Thank you everybody for your work on there and uh, for Director Bryn Edwards' uh, leadership on this policy, thank you.
So I have another amendment. Uh, striking the words or practices from paragraph five. I, I move that we strike the word, the words or practices from paragraph five.
Second. Okay, Director Bailey moves, Director Bryn Edwards seconds uh, an amendment, um, striking the word or practices, words or practices. Any discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student Representative Pasler?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment passes by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Pasler voting aye.
And I have some questions.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, on paragraph three on the first page. I'm unclear, do principals have the authority to approve regular off-campus field trips? It says endorse and I'm not sure what endorse means.
Sorry, what, can you?
Or is the authority with the superintendent?
I think the discussion is um, sort of distinguish. Uh, field trips that might happen during the course of a school day, say a trip to the museum, uh, something in district. Uh, I think what the policy was trying to distinguish are, are those that go beyond the bounds. Um, and, and so that, that approval has always resided with our school leaders uh, to, to. Uh, approve those teacher requests for, for learning field trips during the course of the school day.
Okay, but it says superintendent will require schools and staff to submit field trip requests for review and approval or denial. It doesn't say who approves or denies, that's, that's a passive tense and. It's, it's, reading that, it was really unclear to me where, where the authority sat.
Sorry, can you tell Director Bailey what paragraph you're on?
Par- paragraph three on the first, uh, under article one, is that the right?
Yeah, one, one.
Right. Uh, first of all, there, there's also a semicolon there before principals at the end of the, in the second line. And I'm wondering if that should be a period. Because then there's a capital P for principals.
Okay.
I have a different version.
Am I looking at the right one or am I looking at the wrong one? I thought this is what I printed today.
Same here, but I think we're on different. Are you on one, one, one? At, that starts with as authorized?
No, I'm down on three.
Oh, one, three, okay. Oh, here it, here it goes. Yeah, either the P needs to become a smaller case P or it needs to be a period.
Okay.
Says the P E major.
I, I think we need a period there and I think that's just uh, one of those cleanup things that doesn't require a motion. Um, but that, it's unclear to me in those first, or really throughout this is who actually has authority.
So the, the principal, um, Joe's not here, but I'm trying to think if they.
Reading that, reading that first line, it's, it's unclear. Come on down, Joe. I prefer a language that, that says. Principals have authority to approve X. Superintendent must approve Y or however, whatever the hierarchy is here.
That's what, that's what the hierarchy is.
To me, to me endorse says, you know, I've got a little decal on my uh, T-shirt, somebody's giving me some money, but.
And perhaps substituting the word approval. Joe, do you want to speak to?
The current practice for uh, field trips that occur district in the course of the day, as you described. Uh, do lie with the principal unless they are what we classify wilderness or high-risk, uh, challenge courses, rope courses. We do put those through the risk management uh, review process. And then, and then all field trips in general start with the principal. What we currently call approval to plan, so that a staff member does have the endorsement or other, other applicable word. Permitting that, that staff member to begin developing their concept.
I have a follow-up question if, if I could. Joe, um. Both you and the superintendent uh, said. Both day trips in district. Now, did you mean exactly that or does this also cover, say, trips across the river to Fort Vancouver or up the gorge to Multnomah Falls? It, it, it's, I, I, I've, it's come up.
Sure, absolutely, if it's, if it is a day trip, uh, those, those examples, Fort Vancouver would um. Would, would not necessarily go to risk management, except we know that the current policy requires board approval for out of state. So there's a, there's a, there's that hiccup that we're correcting with the new policy that a simple trip to Fort Vancouver. In the course of a day does not require risk management or board approval. Uh, Multnomah Falls, Bonneville Dam, anything near the water, we would consider wilderness, um, hiking, and so we would put that through the risk management review.
Terrific, thank you, I, I really appreciate that, there, there are some strange people who work in Vancouver, you know.
Okay.
So we got to watch out.
Can I just point out, um, number four under one. Says all out of state and foreign travel shall require prior board approval with the exception of travel up to a hundred, a hundred and fifty miles from the PPS headquarters.
Thank you, I thought I remembered that and. I, I didn't see it, so thank you.
Apparently this is a flurry of um, approvals that used to be required for trips, or there had been required for trips to Fort Vancouver and things that weren't that far away, but literally crossed the river.
To Director Bailey's point with the substitution of principals will approve regular off-campus field trips. Suffice instead of may endorse. May, may approve.
Shall, shall have the authority to approve.
Even better.
There's an important clause after that though, comma, subject to. Risk management approval. Just saying, just saying.
I just, I just think two and three need to be reworked. I think it's really, both, both two and three here have.
You have a period.
Awkward phrasings that.
So you have a period after planned activities and then a new sentence that starts, principals shall have the authority to approve regular off-campus. Field trips, comma, and the rest of the sentence.
So again, will be reviewed by, does that mean they must grant authority, they must approve? But I, and I think that's what is intended. Is that if, if there's all off-campus trips. Comprising more than one school day will be reviewed, it says reviewed by, but I think what's intended there is that. Both risk management and the area assistant superintendent must give their approval to, is that?
Absolutely, there shouldn't be any field trips beyond one day that is reviewed.
Reviewed by is not giving approval to.
Okay, I'm going to make a suggestion here. I truly hate to do this.
No, please, let's, let's just get it over the, it'll take, I mean.
Okay.
Well, it'll be another three, three weeks and.
Okay.
I mean, we've had this policy for s- six months, um, so let's just get it through. So um, we're adding principal shall have the authority to approve regular off-campus. Field trips subject to risk management approval occurring during the course of the school day, semicolon. And the next sentence.
If we're, if we're amending, I, I, I think a bunch of periods in here would help.
All off-campus trips comprising more than one school day will be reviewed by both risk management and the supervising area assistant superintendent. And Joe, the question is, is, are you reviewing, are you reviewing and approving?
I'd like to keep the reviewed by the risk, by risk management and approved by the supervising area assistant superintendent. I just think we should keep the chain of command there clear with the supervising principal, uh, assistant su.
Okay, so we're going to add the word approved after and, and approved by the supervising area assistant superintendent. Okay?
The, the first sentence is still unclear. So i- if we change it so that principals can approve, have the authority to approve, the first sentence still says any field trip. So, so if, if a teacher takes a bunch of kids, walks them down to the art museum and back. Does that have to go to the superintendent? That's how the first sentence reads.
No, what, I think what it's saying is that the superintendent is requiring that, and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, is that. That they have to submit field trips, you can't just go off on a field trip without submitting a request.
That's correct, there's a, a form and the permission slip that goes with it for. You know, all the parents need to know if their, their student is stepping off campus.
Uh, it says for review and approval or denial. Which implies that the superintendent has, is going to approve or deny those field trip requests.
Then it goes on to say who's approving. In the long run on sentence that now is separate sentences.
And I'm saying that first sentence then doesn't make any sense.
So you, 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 you could. Just change it to write, so it starts with school and staff shall submit field trip requests for review and approval or denial prior to any planned activities, period. And then you have the list of approvals. It was just adding in, I think, look, I don't know what originally started, but it was.
Okay, would, would it help to? Would it help to break these out into bullet points?
I think so.
I mean, if we're, if we're wordsmithing here, you know, let's head at.
This is, this is, are we going to wordsmith here for God knows how long?
Well, I'm sorry, but the, the committee spent a, a lot of time, it's been out for a first reading for.
May a culpa, may maxima culpa.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get, the first sentence, if you just have school and staff shall submit. Field trip requests for review and approval or denial prior to any planned activities. That's a statement. And then you have the next layers of how the approvals hap- um, happen, period. Principal shall have the authority to approve. Principal shall have the authority to approve regular off-campus field trips subject to risk management approval occurring during the course of one school day, period.
I, I, I think it might actually help to break them out into bullet points.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Just, okay, so.
I'm, I'm good.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's just, so do bullet points? Okay.
So we would have a three A, three B, three C, okay?
And we just take off the first the superintendent would require? I think that was just like, you're omniscient, all-powerful.
All we were trying to say there is that there'll be, there will be a field trip request form, you know, at the appropriate level.
Language is important.
Yes.
It's probably an artifact of the old policy. And then when we get to the OSBA review.
I'm sure the AD will make it sufficiently abundantly clear.
Okay, so Ms. Houston, do you have all of the changes?
I do.
Okay, can, can we do like a bundle, like what we just said? Are you good?
So I move what we just said.
Second.
Okay, Director Bailey moves, Director Brim Edwards, seconds. Amended language. Okay, any further discussion? Yeah, yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we're gonna vote on this amendment. So all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? Any extensions? Student Representative Paisler?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment passes by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Paisler voting aye. Okay, anything else? Can I call the question?
I listed.
Okay. So we're gonna vote on the, on resolution five eight five seven as amended. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? Any extensions? Student Representative Paisler?
Aye.
Okay, resolution number five eight five seven as amended, passes by a vote of six to zero with Student Representative Paisler voting aye. Okay. Okay. A little painful, but it was worth it, okay.
I, I wanna thank the rest of the board for just allowing that extra time so that we can get it through. I appreciate it. I think we're at done, so I.
Okay. Right. Okay, okay. Okay, so Student Representative Paisler has to leave at this point because he's a student and has stuff to do.
Good thing he got his report done.
Good thing he's got a report done.
Yeah.
And it's a good thing. I'm going to see colleges tomorrow. This is a very early flight, so positivity.
Okay, good luck. Okay.
Safe travels.
Um, next discussion is on the 2019-20 budget.
Well, Chair Moore, now that we're sufficiently warmed up, we have an important installment on the 2019-20 budget development process. You have quite the trio up here. Our Deputy Claire Hertz, Cynthia Lay, our Chief Financial Officer, and I'm not sure if everyone has had the opportunity to meet our new addition, Jordan Eli is our Budget Director, filling that slot. So you're, you're arriving at a good time.
We are certainly glad to have him join us as a team. I'm really excited to have a fully staffed financial leadership team. And I'll tell you just a little bit about Jordan. He, I, we're a small community in K-12 school finance, so we know each other, right? And Jordan actually comes from a family that has, his mother actually is in the profession as well. So he grew up with it at the dinner table. And so he has, you know, it's in his blood and his genes, so we're glad to have him here, so.
Thank you.
All right, so really looking at our budgeting process, we, we'll be using our best, trying to figure out what I need to do. You can still hear me okay, all right? Best practices from Government Finance Officers Association for school budgeting, so continuing in that mode. We have experienced a highly collaborative process so far, working interdepartmental in our budgeting and staffing for schools. So we're happy to bring this next tier in the budget process to you as a board. And so we're gonna be covering the principles we use to help guide our work and then give a, a budget update as well as more information on school staffing and then our next steps in the budget process. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Cynthia Lay, to share the budget principles guiding this work.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent, the District develops the proposed budget for 2019-20 by incorporating the emerging vision of transforming PPS into one of the premier public schools in the country. The budget focuses on financial stability and builds upon strategies of impact instruction in curriculum, staff development, and multi-tiered system of support. Under the Every Student Succeeds Act, also known as ESSA, the federal government requires we identify schools that need improvement. The comprehensive supports and intervention schools, also known as CSI schools, need the most improvement and more support in both academic and behavior interventions. The next level is the targeted support and intervention schools, also known as TSI, are the next level and still need academic support. The title funding is used for English learners, for native and migrant students, students who are living in poverty, neglected, and delinquent, delinquent, the students experiencing homelessness. The funds are used to supplement instructions, efforts of a school and never is to be used as to supplement the core programs. Federal title funding is also intended to provide extra education service for the underserved students. The multi-tiered system support, also known as TMT, MTSF, is a system that uses data to problem-solve the academic and behavioral interventions. And now I am going to turn to Jordan Eli, our Budget Director, and he will present the budget update.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. Since the board's last meeting, the Ways and Means Committee has proposed a budget $100 million less than the governor's. The legislature's budget will go through several iterations, meaning that our estimated state revenue will likely change several times between now and June. Staff continuously plans for changes to our funding level based on the priorities presented previously by Cynthia. In the end, the budget must balance with available resources and does not include funds from possible revenue measures that have yet to pass among our voters. If the co-chair's budget is approved, this is the potential impact to PPS, if you look at the slide here. Superintendent Guerrero has, has indicated at least tentatively that he would recommend furlough days over diminishing resources to our schools any further. Within the Budget Department, we are continuing to plan at the governor's proposed budget level because the planning process cannot respond to each iteration of the legislature's proposed budget. In order to have teachers in our classroom in September, we need to begin hiring in the spring. The governor's budget is not enough to maintain current service levels and we are mindful that the Quality Education Commission has identified $10.7 billion as the funding level needed to meet Oregon's educational goals. Announcements have been made about shifts in the central office structure, which will continue to evolve over time to meet organizational needs. Investments and divestments will be constantly evaluated to support the values and vision of the district. We have recently received the final reconciliation number for the 2017-18 fiscal year and the most recent estimate for the 2018-19 fiscal year from the Oregon Department of Education. We have also received updated actuals for the transportation grant from the Department of Education. These total up to the $10 million you see on the line for SSF, State School Fund adjustments. Changes to these values were caused by enrollment and property tax fluctuations across the state over the past two years, but the result for Portland Public Schools is, of course, $10 million in positive revenue adjustments. The State School Fund is a dynamic calculation, which changes with enrollment and property tax changes throughout the state. Our portion of the State School Fund is expected to decrease for 2019-20 due to lower-than-projected enrollment, declining English-language learners, reduced students in poverty, and a state school funding level that does not maintain current service levels. However, contractual obligations need to be honored and healthcare and retirement costs continue to increase. Beyond our efforts to align resources to support our core values, the governor's budget will require us to draw down our reserves by $7 million in order to provide equitable education opportunities for all of our students. Will indirect impacts be felt by the schools? Yes. Reducing services in certain areas will result in diminished services to the schools. The focus of the 2019-20 budget is to achieve equitability for our students. In the absence of new resources, we must make difficult decisions to balance the budget. We thought there may be a reduction when we were preparing this presentation in mentor-coaches, but the, we found out that the ODE grant has been shifted to the Educator Advancement Council, so the funding level has not been impacted, which is why we have restored up there. It will remain the same as fiscal year 18 and 19. And with that, I will hand it back to CFO Lay to talk about the school staffing model.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the grant, so the mentor-coaches, you originally said the grant is sunsetting?
Right.
It is not sunsetting?
Right, it, well, it's sunsetting from its existing, from its current department, but it has actually been moved into a different department. So the impact to PPS is no impact.
So it's a wash?
Yeah, exactly.
Can I ask a question about the 70s Sachenberg versus four furlough days? How much money is that?
I did not.
I can look it up.
Yep, get back to you.
Yeah.
So, go ahead, go ahead. Do something different.
So over the last, I don't know, how long it's been, like 15 years? I don't think PPS has, it's been the one district that hasn't furloughed day because we have, what, $80 million in a local option? We have art tax money, we have foundation money, we haven't ever furloughed. So I'm curious what's changed, 'cause my understanding is the local option funds are coming in even higher and there's districts that don't have, don't have local options at all. So I'm interested in why our, with our very generous local option, we wouldn't be able to have sort of our basic school year, which is short, short as it is.
So I think it's important that the legislature understands that, that the level of funding that they're bringing forward does create a shortfall for the district. There could be other decisions made. We do have a PERS rates stabilization fund that we use some funds out of it, but we're also mindful of how, how many years it's taken to bring that, to, to develop that fund. And then we have at least three, total of six years, that we can expect increased rates and we are trying to manage it so that it will last through those increases over the next three biennia. And so we have opted to leave the remaining there so that we can make it through, have a more stretched-out, you know, making it through more sustainable budget. Furlough days aren't necessarily sustainable, but it is, our superintendent is concerned about continuing to erode programs and eroding the needs to make excellence in the classroom. And so this is a message to the legislature that we, funding at the governor's level, we have made the level reductions to balance to the governor's level of budget. And when we go farther than that, we're really not interested in continuing to erode our educational programs.
So we would be below the state mandated minimums or, what numbers? There'd be four days, four days off of what number and where would that put us on the state minimums?
I, I think what we're trying to demonstrate here is that if we had to operate at that level, which I hope is not going to be the case moving forward, is to paint a picture for our constituents around what the impact would be. So, you know, to try to quantify it a little bit. And so in this case, you know, an estimate of that number of teaching positions, 70, that's not a small number, or another strategy available to school districts are furlough days. I'd be the last person to wanna see our school year get any shorter than it is. But we wanna be really clear what the impact would be. And yes, we benefit from the generosity of our voters in ways that even other districts don't. But every conversation we've ever had at this dais has been about how do we tick up additional FTEs for more quality programming for our schools that are in need of additional support? So I, I don't know that there would be an impact for, for this large number of positions to be deleted out of our schools. And that's certainly a, a discussion the board will need to have if we get to that point. I think when, when urban districts, you know, are size and larger and certainly have been through even larger cuts during the recession, I think everybody needs to understand that this has to sort of, in many ways, impact everybody equitably. And so versus continuing to, to take it from the same unit, for instance. So it's never a strategy any superintendent wants to put forward as, as a recommendation and I encourage us to remain advocates. There'll be an opportunity this week to do that when they're in town this Thursday evening. We're, we're just wanting to make sure that folks have a sense of the scale of the negative impact that, that it will have on, on what we're trying to accomplish here.
And it is 7.6 million.
For either the, the four days or the, I say.
3.7 on the slide.
So the 7.6 is over the biennium?
The two years.
Yeah.
Okay, but 3.7 million in one year, 3.8 is not 70 teaching positions, it's about half that.
No.
I mean.
We'll have to get back to it.
Yeah, ballpark, ballpark is a hundred thousand dollars fully fleshed out for a teaching position. That should be.
Right, it, it, so we'll have to confirm the data later. We, we're not in the place to do that right now.
And Superintendent Guerrero, I would mention, while I have not done a scientific survey of the district, I have talked with an awful lot of people, staff and parents. And universally, people are saying that they would prefer the furlough to more staff cuts, saying exactly what you were just saying. I, I do have one quick question and I don't expect that this is gonna be in, in your heads at the moment, but for future reference, I would like to see it mentioned. On page 10, slide 10, at the bottom where you have increased expenditures, something I have heard referenced multiple times now is that the number of sped students we are going to have in the district is going to be going up fairly dramatically. I have not seen, that I recall, I have not seen that quantified in a dollar amount.
It's later on in the presentation tonight.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think that's gonna be a good number to hit our legislators over the head with. Thank you, great.
Can I ask a little more, broad reduction of contracts and services, and it said it won't have direct impacts on schools. I know that that's an area where a lot of our underserved populations have specific programs and also can you define what that area is a little more?
So there were some things that were one-time only. So for instance, we, we had a whole budget team that worked here last year that was contracted services, that we now have a budget team. that we now have a budget team that are staff. So, so that's an example of an area that where we're reducing services. But there's, throughout this whole budget, there's many areas that we've reduced services.
So before we launch into the staffing, I feel compelled to put some numbers to the budget shortfall coming out of the state. So the quality education model that everyone likes to reference, which was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine and has never been fully funded by the state of Oregon and its infinite wisdom. According to the commission's own estimate, their calculations, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one biennium, current service level funding should be ten point seven three four billion dollars. So we are one point nine billion dollars short. That is a twenty-two point four percent shortfall. That is not insignificant. The governor's budget is one point seven six two billion below QEM. The co-chair's budget is one point eight six two billion short of QEM. And I've gone to a number of presentations recently where lots of references to the volatility of the tax system in, in Oregon and how that explains a lot about, you know, the almost thirty years of disinvestment in public education. And I just want to point out that in previous episodes of statewide budget shortfalls and the budgets that we're talking about now are, are creating budget shortfalls in, as far as I know, every school district in the state. In previous years, shortfalls were associated with economic recessions. We are not in an economic recession. We are in a, a period of unprecedented economic growth. We are busted in the middle of a boom, a boom of historic proportions with unprecedented corporate profitability. The problem is the state is not capturing any of that because of the tax structure that we have. So, yeah, I think it's long past time that we start sending some serious messages to Salem that if you're not going to give us the money we need to educate our kids, then this is, these are the consequences. And in this case, I personally, I would rather make a statement with furlough days than with cutting staff when we're already cutting staff. And we've been cutting staff for thirty years. Enough already. Okay.
Well, I'll add to that, how can they justify the shortfalls that they're, that we're anticipating when people like to say, well, we're, you know, in the lower half of graduation rates across the country? Actually, we're driven from the bottom.
Okay, having had a rant, please continue.
I mean, one of the things is we have a, a personal kicker that's kicking, that's going back at a high level. And, you know, one of the things that the state is looking at and I think we need to consider this is if we get additional investment and funds, whether that goes to, one of the buckets is increasing instructional time. And while nobody wants to reduce staffing, you know, a child can't learn if they're not, not in school. And, and, and I want to say the choices that have been made over the last twenty years have been made with, you know, full community support. And, you know, Portland parents have been the ones who have been, you know, in the trenches, in Salem, driving larger, larger budget numbers. And oftentimes it was really driven by not just saving programs, but also wanting to have a school year in which the material can be covered. So I think we have to be careful about who we're sending a message to.
And I just want to piggyback on Director Moore of her comment about we are in the middle of the booming of the, of the economy and why is it we're still having issues with the school funding? And that is because the market share of K-12 over the last ten years is shrinking based on the governor's budget. So that is the real question, the, the real answers to your, to your comment. And I would like to continue on, if I may, with the school staffing for our fifty thousand students in Portland Public Schools. Our instruction, instruction team consisting of the instructional leadership team and the school principals along with the central office staff, that is the budget team, the grant team, the finance team, the HR team, work together to come up with the developing of the staffing model. And the staffing model focuses on equitable access to quality core programs for all students and uses enrollment projections to determine the school staffing allocations. So the staffing for two thousand nineteen, twenty is based on the projections for October two thousand nineteen enrollment. And they were done by Portland State University's Population Research Center, is also known as PRC, and have been working for the district since nineteen ninety-nine. They use a cohort survival method to forecast enrollment at individual schools where projected enrollment in any given school and grade is based on the previous year's grade at that school with adjustment of how student trends to progress from grade to grade. So they look back three years plus the projection to come up with the, the projection for the, the coming year. So the PPS enrollment projections is done at the district level, at the cluster level, and at the school level. Kindergarten forecast is informed by the birth data collected from the county. And the PRC projections are completed in, in December. So, and this forecast can be changed for any expansions, any configuration change or any transfers and other factors associated with the transfer process and may or may not be known by the, the PRC at the time that the projection would be made in December. So our staffing formula for the general fund is the, we start with allocating the FTE based on class size. Then we add allocation for equity for underserved students. Then we add school-wide supports such as administration, counseling, secretaries, et cetera. And finally, we add the additional FTE for special needs and English learners.
What's the general size of the equity allocation? Is it, is it a percent or a?
It is based on the socioeconomic. So each school, depending on the size of the school, has a percentage and is, it's a mathematical. And, yeah, in the budget document, there will be a couple of pages showing each school, for each level of support, the FTE assigned to each school.
Is it eight percent?
It's eight percent.
It's, it's a eight, yeah.
Seven to eight percent.
Right.
Of the, of the total staffing?
Right.
So depending on the school size, that could either give you a partial FTE or for the larger school.
Right.
It's a set aside across the entire district that amounts to seven to eight percent of total staffing, but that doesn't mean each school gets seven to eight percent. I just want to make that clear. It's an equity allocation, so the, the equity portion goes specifically to schools that are serving underserved populations.
Right, but it's not based on a formula by how much each school gets. So if you had a, say eighty percent historically underserved, would you get a larger percentage than a school that was, say, forty-five percent historically underserved students?
So let's think of it this way, we, we, you look at the CSI, the TSI, and then the title, and all of those add up. And then you also have the underserved, and then you have the special needs, and then you have the ELL. And then on top of that, you have your PE, you have the schools that have specific subjects that you need to dedicate FTE. So it is quite complex, but we're able to break it down and present to you in such a way that when you look at the presentation of the, a given school, you can see the additional FTE added for a particular type of the schools. So did that, did I answer your question or do you still have some, some lingering question, questions in your mind? So for example.
This, this would be eight percent of total staffing roughly.
Roughly.
Non-administrative formula.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
And school-wide support would be another.
Counselors.
In terms of percent.
I don't have the.
That's not a percentage that's based on enrollment and it's got multiple criteria.
And then there's a needs base pullout.
Right.
That's not allocated till after the year starts.
That's right, so the, the need base could very well be a school offering AP classes, for example. And we need that specific type of teachers, so we need to support that school with that additional, yes.
I think you're thinking of the set aside, FTE is what you're describing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that is sixty FTE and this, and the proposed budget will be sixty. And we are looking about half of it allocating early on based on needs and requests. And the other half, more later in the summer when we see what student counts are looking like.
So technically, set aside should be another little, that sixty should be another plus.
If it's within, it could be.
And also, it, it all depends on the size of the school too, and I would talk about it in my next, next several slides. And if you have certain size of the school, you get additional VP or additional support of some kind, depending on the choice of the principal.
A follow-up question on the end of the allocation, is that all going to classroom or can some of that be spent on school-wide support?
All going into classroom.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I believe that it can be used. So we'll have to confirm that.
We can have Dr. Quayar answer that question since I know our principal supervisors have been giving their school leaders direction in this case.
I thought there was some potential AP.
Good evening. So to answer the question specifically, as I know that we're having questions coming in around how are equity dollars spent and then what are some of the decision-making around some of the positions that we are utilizing these funds on? The principal supervisor, specifically the areas and superintendents are working very, very closely with each of the principals, depending on what the school need is. And what we're doing is that we're attaching it to their school, to their school progress plans and making sure that we are making decisions that is going to be a value-add for children and for their school-wide plans moving forward. Some of the things, for example, that can be used with some of the additional dollars, some of the principals have decided that they needed a school climate specialist to help with the school climate and culture work and to help with supervisory duties, which would be towards their culture, climate plans. Other things also such as counselors are, are, are positions that we sometimes will allocate depending on the need in the building. This can also be used for school engagement specialists. We've also seen it also being used to continue to fund positions that they have previously funded in the past, positions that have shown to be very successful regarding instruction or, or in some type of capacity or access to kids. I know it's very general, but when we're looking at seventy-nine different budgets, it's definitely gonna vary, especially when we're looking at our schools that are in most need of support or SS schools. We know that we have to be a lot more granular in decisions that we're making in terms of what positions we are appropriating based off of the funding that they're getting, whether it is foundation, whether it's equity, or whether it's general. I, I, I know that this might not be the venue to really kind of dig deep into what that looks like, but also do know that that's, since we are prioritizing what we're, how we're funding, you know, our neediest schools, that is something that we've been working very closely, you know, with those schools in particular in terms of making sure that we're allocating for positions that are gonna be the best served for kids. I, I know that that's really high in the sky and it didn't really probably answer at a granular level, but that just kind of takes you through a little bit of a process in terms of how we're looking through it because there are really three major funding streams. And then there's actually, we go through the process, like Claire was explaining, around the set aside process, making sure that we satisfy the requirements of core first and foremost. And the second thing that we're looking at is how we're prioritizing our SS schools, which is the second major priority. After we allocate the set aside to make sure that we're fulfilling those two requirements in our buildings, then we go through a process of justification in terms of working with principals and how we're allocating our equity and foundation dollars.
So last year, pretty much for the first time, as far as I know, there was a process of reviewing how the equity allocation was actually allocated at the school site. And it sounds like we're continuing that.
Yes, ma'am, and it's, and it's, we're tweaking the process as we go and we're making it a little bit tighter to where, you know, we're asking a lot more questions and we're asking the right questions in terms of how are we ensuring that that has the most value-add and return on investment for kids? Is in some cases, if, you know, if we have been allocating typically for a certain position or positions and we're now seeing the return on investment, then that's where my team is having those, you know, conversations with principals around in terms of how can we better allocate for something else that was gonna get maximum impact for kids? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Moving along, as a best practice, we provide this information so that you can see the night, the two thousand eighteen PPS average class size in comparison to other large school in, in, in Oregon. PPS is, has one of the smallest class size averages and includes classroom teachers, PE, art, music teachers, as well as special ed and ESL teachers. And these are teachers in the classroom with students.
It's interesting because I haven't met any parent who's got a child in the class of twenty. So there's something about the way it's presented that may be.
I, I think it's important to clarify if you're just dividing up the number of adult FTEs by the number of children we have.
It does not include counselors, it does not include social workers. It does include anyone that is charged to an instructional level program. So that means when you have a special ed classroom of ten students, that's included. When you have an ESL teacher that is working in the school in addition to the regular classroom teacher, that is again put into the average. And so what's important is that all the districts are counting the same way. This data is submitted the same way to ODE. And so it is not necessarily an average class size of the third grade classes in, across the district. It's not used like that, it's in a comparison of all classroom teachers. It's in a comparison of all classroom teachers and the number of students.
Yeah, it's just like, parents, though, that's how they think of it, and so...
Sure, sure.
Just to go back to like the furlough discussion, so if I, if I were looking at this and be like, you're suggesting four days when we're like way below these other ones, the data doesn't necessarily support that programmatically we, um, are short on staff. So it's a presentation of the data that...
Of course. This is, this is, you know, as Deputy Hertz described, a comparator. Now, we know what we might see on average, uh, in our classrooms. What we can say is, it's better than the typical, uh, and certainly we could choose to do with less FTEs, and assuredly, we would move up the scale, uh, and what you would actually see in front of you when you walked in the classroom would be a lot larger.
And so as you look at the other districts that are on this list, not all of them have local option levies. So the two lowest at the bottom, um, with the smallest have local option levies. So that does make a difference. That's dedicated towards class size.
Eugene and North Blackamas, North Blackamas just passed one, didn't they? And Eugene has one?
Yes, this is two thousand eighteen data.
And, um, the reductions in school staffing, this is a new slide, and in CSI and title schools, we did not change the class-size ratio. Um, we have slight increases in class size in other schools, and, um, some schools may see reductions due to declining enrollment, and we have, uh, combined very small class sizes at grades four and fifth, um, into blends. And, um, I just want to, again, reiterate that there's no reduction in Title I funding. There is a breaking news, I think it was just yesterday, that we heard from, um, Leslie Odell, um, that, um, titles has been restored to, um, the same level as, um, in eighteen nineteen.
Will that make a, any change in your projection?
We have already made that change, um, in the, the presentation, so...
Just looking for a little rainbow.
Of course, of course, yeah, and I appreciate that.
I also want to appreciate staff who worked through the weekend...
Yes.
To re-engineer those allocations, so schools could make better informed decisions, that there were in fact more funds available to them, and not impact on any staffing decisions where possible.
Right. It's an effort of many, 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 um, staff with many, um, late nights and weekends. You bet. And also, I would like to mention that on Measure Ninety-Eight funding, um, the, um, any, um, unspent, um, money, uh, by June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, will not be carried over. Um, we will be starting a new, um, biennium, um, with two thousand nineteen-twenty budget, and we are anticipating the budget to be the same.
So just curious, and this is, um, maybe a question for the superintendent about the four or five blends. Are the teachers who are, um, since that's not a sort of widespread model, but it looks like it might be proposed for next year, um, are the teachers who are going to be teaching that four or five blend going to get some sort of peak, uh, professional development or special curriculum so that, um...
So these are, you're, you're right on with, with the, the line of questioning Director Brim Edwards, um, as, as a career-long four or five Spanish bilingual teacher. I know the issues well, um, but the team, uh, in teaching and learning, uh, is, are really kind of tackling, uh, maybe RCAO could do a little commercial plug about, we, we have had some combination classes in the district, but, uh, you're seeing sort of a forced hand to, to implement more of them, so that, that has a curricular implication.
Good evening, board members. Um, the district has had three or four schools that have, for several years, offered four or five combinations. Um, and in those combinations, each grade has, has received grade-level curriculum. Um, we're expanding that to cover over fifteen schools this year, and so part of that will be ensuring the provision of resources that align to their grade level, providing professional development so that they can work within a blended environment, um, and ensure that the grade-level standards are being met, and that the curriculum is aligned to the grade, which is a challenge sometimes when, when you're working in a combination classroom. Um, and so our, our team had, is putting together not only a guide, but that guide will be followed up with some professional development to ensure that those, those classes receive the supports that they need in order to effectively, uh, implement the instructional programs.
So my assumption is, we're going to those four or five blends in the schools where the numbers would lead us to make, make those blends. And so, um, if you have a sort of limited, if a smaller school, are, are teachers being asked to volunteer, are they volunteering, or is this a, this is, you, you may, you may be a fourth-grade teacher this year, but next year you're going to be a four or five? I'm just wondering what the, the process is by which those choices are being made.
Maya, and I speak from my understanding, but, uh, Dr. Claire could probably respond more completely. A, a school like Skylight, where their teachers are actually volunteering to work with, with us, because they've had, uh, combination classrooms for a while. Um, they were assigned to those classes initially, but now they voluntarily work, uh, at those levels because they've, then now they team up to, to do the planning. But the orig, the initial assignment, that's the question that I, that I can answer.
So this, there's definitely sort of an, an HR-oriented process that has to happen as principals are making these staffing decisions. Looks like Oscar wants to offer an example, but, um, about how that goes about.
Dr. Valentina said, uh, we have several schools that have blended classrooms, not only the four or five, but other grades. And, uh, first thing is, we ask for volunteers, but if we don't have volunteers, then we have to work with the staff to say, we have to balance our budget, and so work on with the four or five model, and we are creating a plan that we're going to support you, provide professional development, and a structure that's going to support you. So we have the conversations that were, uh, that are taking place right now with all of our principals and our staff, and so right now, I haven't heard from any of my principals, or any principals that have staff that are not, some of them, we have to make sure that we get some more buy-in and understanding in how they're going to get support, but so far, we don't have any staff that are pushing back.
So I think what you're going to continue hearing is a few ways, we're just really tightening the belt further. None of these are strategies we would prefer to be implementing, but we have a budget, a balanced budget to, to submit to the board. So, uh, these are the impacts that are going to continue to be felt in our schools. These are, these are not sort of decisions we would prefer to make. We know that it presents a challenge when you create combination classrooms that are curriculum-oriented. We're going to ask our teachers to further differentiate when they have a span of two grade levels in front of them, and so you're going to find more schools where, where you're going to find classrooms, uh, like that. So, uh, this is why we need to remain advocates, to make sure that, uh, we're, we're being a little bit better about preserving the educational programming. So, which I think is what this next table, um, is sure to conjure questions and confusion, but we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can explain this, uh, simply, uh, about where you see these ranges being impacted, and how we've attempted to keep them as minimal as, as possible.
Thank you. So on this slide here, you will see, um, the, a work in, um, aligning, uh, guiding principle with shifting resources to our most underserved student population. The CSI and title school staffing ratios remain unchanged from the eighteen-nineteen year. So that is the second column to your right. And all other schools will have slight increase ranging from one to three, um, in average class sizes. All right. So blended classrooms at PPS include students from, um, two grade levels receiving age-appropriate instruction, um, from the same teacher in the same classrooms.
Can we go back?
Yes.
Can you explain what co-located and program mean?
So that's when we have a, a dual-merger school, it's co-located. We have the English strand and the dual-merger strand, so they're co-located.
Right. So we're both going to be blending fourth and fifth?
What school is this?
So you got Beach, Kelly, um, Bridger.
We do have some schools that are going to be doing that. Bridger, for example, is one of my schools, and they're going to be doing that. We have some blended classrooms in the English strand, and some on the dual-merger side.
So for some schools, it's one or the other?
Well, it depends on the numbers. Sometimes you have class sizes of ten each, if you don't have that many students, or if you have too many students move out, which that's what happened in some of our upper grades. And so when you have the numbers that are too low, then you have to blend them in order to be able to make the budget work.
Okay, here, I'm, I'm going to be really blunt. So, historically, um, when it comes to allocating resources in a school that has co-located programs, generally speaking, the neighborhood program took the hit, and usually, the DLI program did not. Is that still the case?
Yes, it's still the case. And so, so our, and, and some of our schools, what we have is, we have, for example, at Bridger, where we gave them the equity money, and so sometimes they want to use that to create straight classes, and so, uh, it, so, yes.
So it's, um, right now, it's driven by numbers, so it depends. If there's less students on the, um, English side, which would be the neighborhood school, where they don't have enough to make another whole class, then it would be on that side. If DLI might, might have full classrooms, so it's all just numbers-driven at this point. Okay, so, so we're not holding harmless, uh, this is what I want to know. I mean, because there has been a definite pattern in the past, so I want some assurance that we're not holding harmless immersion programs from budget cuts, and, and making the neighborhood programs take all the hits. No. Okay. So that kind of prompts another question I have, is like the four or five blends at these eighteen schools, that's a lot of schools. Does that mean that every fourth and fifth grader is in a blended classroom, or you might have two fourth grades, two fifth grades, and one blended four or five?
It depends on what the principal wants to do. There are some schools where, uh, the principal is creating four fives in all the classrooms so that they can partner better, and they can work on professional development and lesson plans together, but that isn't something we require them to do. It's, it's just what some of them are, are deciding to do as they work as a team.
So it's eighteen schools, and it may be one four or five, or it could be all the four fives.
Right.
It's also important to note, too, that the, the staffing process has really just begun underway. So a lot of this is preliminary. Um, and so as, as the SMTs are getting updated, and as, um, as, as schools are starting to start craft their master schedules moving into next year, this, this, this is very preliminary. And I want to say that as well, too, because a lot of the principals have been working with our team to be very strategic and crafty in terms of how they're able to still do their master without probably having to entirely do the blends as well. Um, but this was something that, again, was on the table due to the budget constraints as, as, as one of the top options in order for us to be able to meet the requirements. But in some cases, as we're working with principals, you know, principals are also finding other ways to do some of, to do some of the work that they wanted to do, and, and our team is working with them to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that the board knew that, that it's still very early, um, because this process is still very early. It, it, and I just hope that, you know, I wanted to make sure I put that out there.
So Chair Moore, none of this, doesn't appear that any of these are on the neighborhood side of a co-located program, with the exception of Kelly, which is, is both sides are combined. So...
I'm sorry, what did you, what did you say?
So, uh, Chair Moore was saying, you know, for example, at Beach, where, you know, there's a pretty good disparity, good, uh, pretty large disparity between the neighborhood side and the DLI side. Her question was, well, are, is it the neighborhood side that would be taking the four or five combination? When I looked through these, the only neighborhood side that is in these, that's part of a co-located program, is Kelly, and both the neighborhood and the DLI program are looking at a combination four or five.
Well, Bridger's got a neighborhood side.
Right, but it's not the neighborhood side that's...
It looks like it's that.
That's in this, a-again, very initial formulation, which may change.
So, um, so these are eighteen new schools that are doing a four or five blend. There are schools that have been doing a four or five blend, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It says not currently blending at the top.
Okay, so this is verging on getting into weeds, but I'm going to ask it. Can I assume that there's some pedagogical rationale to doing a blend at fourth, fifth, as opposed to, I don't know, second, third, third, fourth?
Yes, for those of us who've taught, um, blends, and I taught them in every combination, um, it, it's better to push the blends to the older grades, where students have already, um, learned to read and learned basic math. There's a lot more teaching thematically at four or five, so it enables you to do that kind of thematic teaching, if, if that's the way you're going to approach it. Again, we were trying to not only prioritize the CSI, TSI, and title schools, but then also prioritize the younger, uh, where we could. So when we looked at those ratio changes that, you know, everybody took one across the district, um, we decided that it was better to kind of make a decision at the district level to say where those blends would be, instead of having them all over the place. First of all, we, we think it's less effective for the young kids, especially if teachers haven't done that or aren't choosing to do that. Um, the other thing is, it's more difficult for us to support it when, you know, it's kind of random combinations all over the place. This way, we know who we have to support, um, and like, uh, Dr. Quayar said, some of this is preliminary, because some of these are using equity funds or other things, other funds to unblend, so we're waiting to see how many there are, but this allows us to support them. I forget how many schools it is that are already blending, I think it may be three or four, and those principals have offered their teachers to help us work on the professional development, because they actually love teaching the blends and have done it with the new standards and the new curriculum, and so we'll be using our expert teachers in the district already to support the others. Do you want me to respond to the furlough question? I'm sorry, I was taking restroom break, when the question came up about the furlough days?
No, I think we...
You got it answered, okay.
Well, it's just a future discussion.
It's out there.
It would be a process.
Yeah.
All right. So the definition of large school for the high school is one thousand students or more, and for K-eight is five hundred students or more. So changes in grant funding, um, so for Measure Eight, we have talked about, um, there's no carryover amount for, um, any unspent, um, money, um, at June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, as we will be starting a new annual, uh, beginning with July one, two thousand nineteen. Measure Ninety-Eight, um, is dedicated, um, for the ninth-grade success teams, chronic absenteeism, uh, post-secondary success, CTE, and culturally-relevant paccagodi. So that are the, um, five things that is dedicated to be, um, spent for Measure Ninety-Eight in nineteen-twenty. For title, um, the plan is to abuse the allocation, um, to, um, increase, um, school allocations, continue support, um, the learning, um, efforts, um, early learning efforts, to continued the school improvement support, and to continued with homeless student support. These are the investments in school support for two thousand nineteen-twenty. We have made some investments in school supports in nineteen-twenty in the... in the special ed area and curriculum and assessments. For single administrative schools needing extra support, we have added a halftime administrator or school climate specialist. In addition, we have committed to adding custodial and maintenance support to all schools. In addition, all schools will receive security upgrade from bond.
Can you talk a little more about...
Go back.
The curriculum resources and assessment, so is that, the curriculum resources, would they be considered part of the core material? Or are there some for interventions, you know, for kids that are behind or not meeting benchmarks?
So the allocation of those resources are designed to continue, to further the implementation of the guaranteeing of a curriculum by ensuring the resources, language arts, math. Moving forward for next year, there will be, also be a strong emphasis in science because of NGSS. And so one of the things that we're doing at the elementary level is to focus on the curriculum design for elementary school science, so that will be a part of that. There will be some monies allocated. MTSS implementation is an expensive endeavor, and a lot of it is going, the first couple of years, to professional development and support. But we also have to pay attention to what resources are we going to include. And those are questions that you've asked us for, for, for quite a while now. And so as we provide the first phase of the professional development for our teachers and our administrators, we're now looking at what are the resources that we're going to provide for Tier Two, right? So one of the things that we're doing right now is doing inventory on all of the various resources that we have because they're not necessarily aligned to the work that we're trying to do. Once we do that, we're able to identify where the gaps are. But one of the things that we eventually, we're going to do is have a comprehensive tiering of resources that align with Tier Two and Tier Three intervention support. So we're going to start gradually because the focus is still on the professional development, much of it being paid for by MTSS funds. But we're going to come back on the back end to provide that support for beginning to look at what are the resources that are gonna support our teachers in the classroom for Tier Two.
So just reminding us that twenty percent of the kids are probably not meeting benchmarks, might be more. So each year, those twenty percent of the kids that don't have appropriate interventions and training of teachers are falling further and further behind. That's a large group. So I don't, thank you for acknowledging that they need to be part of the conversation, you're thinking about them. But if I were a parent and my child were part of that twenty percent, and I still didn't have a good plan or materials, and I think it's both professional development and materials that are different than core materials that is what is effective for kids that are struggling.
Right, but, and, and as you know, another challenge is, has been from the very, from, from the very beginning, is not having a sound, good first instruction program, right? So we haven't been able to provide that support at the first tier. And so building a second tier, tier without having a solid foundation would, would be a challenge.
Well, and I think that that's, I think that's problematic for districts to think that way 'cause I've seen many districts going through this, is that you have to think vertically and not just horizontally. And so just wanna keep focusing on that. Yes, we're gonna build this tier, but we need to think of all three of them because there's still a large percentage of kids that are gonna need something markedly different.
Understood.
Thank you, Director. As far as around, I keep reminding people, I keep having to remind people because apparently we, for decades, we've been cranking out people who can't do simple math, that twenty percent of the district is ten thousand children. That's a lot of kids. But Ms. Lake, I did wanna ask on this slide, the six million for special ed, is that the amount we're having to additionally invest because of the increase in special ed numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I would like Brenda Martin to expand a little bit. I, I think certainly we've observed hundreds more of our youngest students entering with more IEPs.
Exactly, yeah.
Could you name some of the big areas that that six million is going to, which are mainly in obligated service delivery?
The six million is going to address the increase in our special ed student population. We have had an increase in over three hundred students. It's probably closer to three seventy now. So some of that will go to provide additional classrooms and supports speech therapy, occupational therapy, learning center teachers, and then, of course, additional equipment that's required to address students' IEPs. Additionally, we are seeing an increase in our early childhood special ed students who are coming in through our doors, so we will have an increase in our incoming kinders. And so that's to help support those students make that transition from early childhood special ed into kindergarten in our K twelve system.
We must keep data as to the types of, you know, the disability categories that they will be identified with. Do we have an idea of the trends right now?
Um, I can certainly pull that.
There's discussion, but I'd be interested.
Yeah, we have all of that data through, it's called SPRNI, our Systems Performance Review and Improvement. And so we do that by age, by disability code, by race, and then also by percentage of placement into a special ed classroom. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to get that information for you.
That'd be great, thank you.
I, I think this slide here represents a really sparse investment into some areas we need, we need to keep alive. So we would, we would prefer to be providing a presentation where we're discussing our professional learning and leadership development catalog for next year, where we're talking about evidence-based Tier Two intervention curriculum, where we're talking about how to really blow out Tag Act and Integrated ELD and libraries and media services and counseling and social workers and our behavioral interventions. I mean, it's not for shortage of understanding what it takes to build a high-performing school system, but this is, this is the same conversation every one of my neighboring superintendents is having right now with their boards. And, and some of them don't have the benefit of, of some other supplements that, that we receive. So it, it's really a dire circumstance. And I think for so long, we've gotten used to the low-quality education model that we're, we're just tinkering around the edges now. There's, there's, there's not a lot left on the bone.
I mean, along those lines. So what I keep hearing, what we all keep hearing, is the need for behavioral supports? Are we doing, are we investing?
There, there's a couple of, well, one specific piece that's not on that slide. We are allocating two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for mental health supports and an increase for social-emotional learning. It's a, it's not even close to as much as we need, but through the superintendent's priorities and the board priorities, we know that that's a value add for a number of our students. So while we're looking at behavioral supports through mental health, we're also looking at building that pro-social behavior through our social-emotional learning. We have eleven schools that are in a pilot right now. We are gonna provide a program evaluation for the next year and then slowly try to increase that with training and purchasing of curriculum for additional schools. It will be at a much smaller pace, unfortunately, just because of the budget issue. And then the other thing that we are doing is with our MTSS rollout, we are focusing not just on the academic side, but also on the behavioral support side. So we're looking through our PBIS, our school climate, and we are looking at vertically as well as horizontally through our Tier One universal supports, our Tier Two supports, and then also our Tier Three supports. We still are funding and staffing the rapid response team, which really looks at those Tier Three supports district-wide. So we are doing a number of those. We're trying to look at it in a systematic fashion. So we are focusing on our CSI, TSI, and our Title Schools in Year One cohort. But what we are doing, even if they're not in the first cohort for schools, we are providing principal training on April tenth and eleventh for all of our principals so that we can continue to help prepare them and have them be ready to benefit for that Year Two cohort.
Can I ask a question about, just sort of some grade level staffing issues on a macro level? There was a lot of discussion over the last year or so about whether it's six classes or seven classes in middle school. And some schools had six and some had seven and some had combinations, it sounds like, or depended. I think I saw an email where there'd been a decision by PAT not to provide a waiver and they're all gonna be six-period, or it's, so I'm, I'm curious what, what we're, what we're staffing at and what...
So we're actually in the process of creating a report for you that, that has more specific information, but I can speak generally. We had three schools that had the seven-period day. The rest of the schools had six periods. Because of the staffing level, that's still where we remain. PAT isn't, doesn't have a problem with continuing, at least at this point, with the, the three schools that already had a seven-period day. If we move to a seven-period day, we would need to negotiate that and have that conversation. But right now, we don't have enough staffing to do that.
So generally, we staff so that the middle schools can have a six, have a six-period.
Right now, it's staffed for six-period. So we're looking at the other ways that we can provide some flexibility. We're looking at zero-period, and this is all the information that's gonna be in the report that we have for you. Zero-period, and I'm forgetting that, oh, we also had a task force who came up with some recommendations. One of the ones that we can move forward on is integrated ELL services in schools where we have a lot of emergent bilinguals, and we have six schools that are starting that pilot. So that would allow some students, the ELL students, to have another elective. And we're also looking at the DLI requirements right now to see if we can provide some flexibility so kids could still be in the DLI program and be able to take an arts class.
And if you're in a under-enrolled K eight, how many class periods do you get?
I would have to check. Six? Yeah, it's still six.
So you'll hear a little bit more on this. I think Dr. Curtis alluded. I've asked staff to prepare sort of a, a wrap-up of the eighteen, nineteen school year as far as where we made some incremental improvements in our middle school redesign and sort of what's on deck that we can continue to push forward for next year, even in the absence of, of robust funding to do that. There's also a lot of variables that would need to be sorted out, even if we had the resources, including some labor commitments that, that we would have to work through. But we are trying to be responsive to, 'cause we share the, the communities, you know, the challenges that, that we know we're up against. It's, you know, how do you participate both in language, meet health and PE requirements, and still participate in arts? And I think we all know that that's, that's where the rub is. And so how do we make those opportunities available? Not just in those school communities that can figure out a way to do it, but make sure, you know, it may not, may not be the model we want now, you know, wanna see in the future, but how do we make sure not close off those opportunities at any one of our schools, no matter, you know, where you attend, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade? Again, another area we would prefer to go deeply and robustly and not able to at the moment.
Turn it over to our Deputy Superintendent Business and Operations, Claire Hurd, for the next steps.
And due to the lateness of the hour, I am going to forego going through the schedule. I think we've seen it before, but it is in the presentation for anyone in the community that's interesting and interested in future meetings. And with that, we will get to the last slide, which is questions. And I think you've been asking them along the way, but I just wanna check in.
Was this, is this something separate?
That is part, those were the questions and answers that were, came from both board members and CBRC that we said we would post, there's four, I think, four to six times during the budget process. We're collecting questions from all of you and then we're providing responses. One of the questions was about a ten-year history, and that's the ten-year history, okay? And we are posting those on the web for the community as well.
So my last question is sort of like the middle school question is, are we staffing high schools that will be in compliance with the instructional hours requirements?
I'm saying yes.
The answer is yes. One of the core things that we looked at when we're going through the staffing process was, number one, was ensuring that we met the requirements for instructional hours and that every student met the requirement for core. And so that was actually, that was number one priority as we're not only going through the process, but as we're also allocating set aside and also looking at all the supplementary funding as well.
Are we good? Okay, well, I mean, just to clarify, we're not good, but, you know, I think we're done for the moment.
We, we wish we could be more uplifting, but we'll be going into a much deeper level of detail at one of our next upcoming dedicated work sessions. So at that point, we'll have greater clarity around where things are landing with school-community discussions and decision-making. And we'll be able to provide a much more accurate roll-up at that point.
Okay. All right, so, next item is the business agenda. Nobody pulled anything out of the business agenda, so the board will now consider the remaining items in the business agenda with resolution five-eight-five-eight removed and the board having already voted on resolutions five-eight-five-six and five-eight-five-seven. Are there any other changes?
There's none.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda? Director Berman Edwards moves. Director Anthony Second's. Is there any comment? Is there any public comment?
No.
Okay, is there any board discussion? Okay, the board, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay, the business agenda is approved by a vote of, are we six? Yes, six to zero, and Student Representative Paisler has left. Okay, next item, Board Committee and Conference Reports.
So both the Policy and Governance Committee met last week, as did the Audit Committee, and we'll be bringing items to the full board. One thing I'd be interested in, just based on a little bit of what happened tonight, that if there's a better mechanism for people who aren't on the committees for either the chair or other committee members to kind of keep people up to date on what we're moving so that when it gets to the, gets to the board, we've been able to structure things so that people get their questions answered in advance or can incorporate their thinking. So if people have ideas, I'd be more than interested. We do have the student rep policy. Hopefully, we'll be coming to the board after spring break, which will be a big, big moment for Nick and part of Moses's legacy.
Okay, anything else? Any other business? Okay, the next meeting of the board will be a work session on April second, two thousand nineteen. Next week is spring break, so I hope everybody takes some time to renew and refresh, and we are adjourned.